You know where Catherine went?
Yes, I saw her.
Catherine?
Yeah, she left earlier.
I saw her. She came in the building.
Okay, we can go ahead and get started with that. Welcome to the City of Crescent City's council meeting. Sorry, we're a little late. We had to convene in closed session at a different location, so a little travel time involved. And we are going to take roll call, Karen, and I believe that's...there she is.
Councilmember Slert?
Here.
Councilmember Westfall?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Marie?
Here.
And Mayor Schlong?
I'm here, thank you. And we just came out of closed session. Mr. Black, could you please report out if there were any actions taken?
Yes, Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. And we are going to move on to acknowledgements this evening. Is Diane Bennett here?
She is.
Oh, there she is, okay. So this is a proclamation this evening for older Americans. Oh, sorry. I'm a little discombobulated. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
And Diane, you're going to lead us.
No. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was going to give you a reason for coming to the microphone.
I left the word out anyway.
So tonight, we have a proclamation for Older Americans Month. And this is in recognition of the Area 1 Agency on Aging. Whereas the City of Crescent City, California, is a community that includes 3,522 citizens aged 60 and older. And whereas the older adults in Crescent City are among our most valued resources, united by historical experiences, strengthened by diversity, and interpreting events through varied perspectives and backgrounds to bring wisdom and insight to our community. And whereas the increasing number of adults are reaching retirement age and remaining strong and active for longer than ever before. And whereas the older adults in Crescent City deserve recognition for their contributions they've made and will continue to make to the culture, economy, and character of our community and our nation. And whereas our community can provide that recognition and respect by improving the quality of life for older Americans, by increasing their opportunities to remain active and engaged in community life, providing individualized services and support systems to maintain health, safety, dignity, and independence of older Americans as they age, combating against attitudes by honoring their past, present, and future contributions. Now, therefore, the City Council of Crescent City, California, does hereby proclaim May 2010 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every citizen to take time this month to honor our older adults and the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for many of them. The involvement of older Americans can enrich the entire community's quality of life. Thank you. And Diane is here to accept this, so before I present this to you, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just want to say, on behalf of all the seniors of Dillnard County and their families, we greatly appreciate this, and we appreciate your support for the programs and policies of the Dillnard seniors in our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[263.64][263.64](applause)
Madam Mayor, could I take this moment to also recognize a special younger, older person in our audience tonight? Mr. Jim Gibson is present here with us, and he's been a very involved citizen for many years, and delighted to see him back here visiting.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome back.
It's very nice to have you here this evening.
Good to see you.
Okay, we are going to move on to the consent calendar, which is our regular minutes of April 19th, warrant claims for April 20th through May 3rd, and bi-weekly payroll reports.
I would move to approve, but I have a correction or two to note. On page four, seven lines down in the bottom paragraph, I was speaking and the sentence says, believes it is practical to put the burden on having, but it's actually was supposed to be impractical.
Changes the meaning.
And then on page six, the third line from the second to bottom paragraph, or I'm sorry, fourth line, I was speaking about Mr. Young and where's the trip to Haiti, and I made a mention of the huge amounts of humanity that are lost in the earthquake like they had in a Third World country. Other than that, I think everything was in order.
Okay. Are there any other?
Yes. Page two, second paragraph from the bottom. Councilmember Westfall stated she wants her comments added to the minutes regarding the interest on the loan for the wastewater treatment facility, as well as her Prop 218 comments. That should specifically say that the interest of $4 million is added to the loan, and that the sewer rates can go back up at any time without a Prop 218 vote.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part?
Sure. That the interest was of an additional $4 million on the loan, and that the sewer rates can go back up at any time without a Prop 218 vote.
I'd like to state for the record, if they were to go up, they could not go up above the amount already made legal through the process.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening, but we are going to adjourn to the redevelopment And please note that all five directors are here this evening, and I will take public comment for RDA, Mr. Miles.
I became aware of something, and I want to thank our city manager for the little meeting I had with thee. I'm aware that the city, if they start doing anything in redevelopment, one or two, need to form a citizen advisory group made up of people who either have businesses or live in RDA 1 or RDA 2. Recently, I've been helping some of my friends in RDA 1, and I really have a concern. There's a piece of property that the city gave the Library District years ago as part of RDA 1. I learned from a good friend of mine, and I'm aware because I sat on the library board when the decision was made, that we wouldn't add to that property because of the cost of the construction. I believe if the Library District is not going to use that property, it should revert back to the city and RDA 1. The reason is, it's next to the other piece of property on the side of Everett's and the Library. It's going to be a big discussion tonight, and I want to thank the city manager about the Tri-Agency and the involvement of the Tri-Agency in, you know, moving the city ahead. I'm not opposed to that, but I think we need to look at all the property that's within RDA 1. Years ago, there was even a plan for the location of where the old fish processing thing was that's on Second Street. That never developed. I talked to a friend of mine. The city has the right in RDA 1, because of the tidal wave, to condemn and use ultimate domain to really make Come Back Town a reality. And let's face it, Come Back Town was a myth after the tidal wave, and my town still looks like the hind quarter of Mrs. Piglet. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Thank you very...Eileen?
Hi, Eileen Cooper, Dillnard County. I feel that the redevelopment monies are little enough to deal with the immense development problems we have in this town. I think that what you're asking is not the best place or the appropriate use for redevelopment monies. We have nuts and bolts problems. Our town looks horrible. We have corners of our town everywhere I go that need nuts and bolts work. And you're asking to get more people here and help to get more people here. Well, redevelopment money was for a community...
Eileen, are you speaking on item number three at this point?
Are we talking about the redevelopment monies?
Right, but if you're talking about tourism dollars, well, that's on item three.
Which one?
Item three, so you can either use your comment for that now or on item three.
Is it for...I thought it was for the redevelopment funds?
Correct.
That you're asking to use those for the visitor center?
Right, this is general public comment. We're going to address...
Okay, we're going to go into the other...
Visitor's Bureau, item three.
Well, I'm very confused by this agenda, I have to admit.
Okay, I'm very sorry about that.
I would like to save it for the appropriate time...
That would be great.
But that is my main, you know, thrust of why I'm here.
Great, thank you. Is there any other general public comment on RDA? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move forward. We have our consent calendar for April 19th and warrant claims for April 20th through May 3rd.
I move that we adopt the regular minutes of April 19th and warrant claims April 20th through May 3rd of 2010.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. We have no executive director's report, but we have a new business item this evening. The history behind item number three is that this, the actual city council board has given $100,000 to the local visitors bureau to provide tourism, advertising to reach tourism, I'm tourists, sorry. And it was a long discussion about sustainable funding for the visitors bureau and how they might reach that goal. There's differing opinions on this board and in the public, and so I appointed an ad hoc committee to address the subject and try to come up with some ideas for consideration. And so Mr. Butler has worked with Mr. Burns and Mr. Slert and the Tourism Visitors Bureau and the Chamber. And one of their thoughts, I think, is being brought forward tonight under RDA, and that is to, for this board, to provide direction to staff regarding the potential contribution of RDA Area 2 funds to the Visitors Bureau for marketing in 2010, 2011. And because I'm not on that committee, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Butler, and he can give us his thought process for bringing us to the RDA.
Thanks, Madam Chair, members of the agency board. We wanted to present this idea to you. It's one of the discussion points that came out of the first two meetings we've had of the Visitors Bureau Funding Strategy Ad Hoc Committee. I wanted to make clear at the beginning that this is not necessarily a committee report. This is the city manager's perspective coming out of two meetings that we've had so far. I think it's that ad hoc committee is going to be an ongoing process, so I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that this was my report, my staff report. It was not a joint report that was put together by the full committee. I think we have several members of the ad hoc committee who are, and of the Visitors Bureau, who are here this evening and may wish to speak and kind of provide their perspective as we move through the item. Okay, just again, by way of background, the agency chair mentioned that in fiscal year 2006, 2007, the city council approved a contribution of $100,000 in general fund dollars to the Visitors Bureau. The Visitors Bureau is a committee of the Chamber of Commerce currently. That was followed up this current budget year, 2009, 2010, with a contribution of $100,000, that also being general fund money. And that money has been delivered to the Visitors Bureau at this point. I think they received the check in February of this year. The mayor at the October Budget Workshop directed the formation of this ad hoc committee that the two council representatives were, Mr. Burns and Mr. Slert. We have had two meetings so far of that ad hoc committee, one on December 16th of last year and then one on February 3rd. We set out to answer five or six basic questions or at least discuss them. I'm not sure we've totally answered them yet, but one is, what is the best source of long-term funding for the Visitors Bureau? If public or taxpayer money is involved, how is accountability for those funds assured? How will success or return on investment be measured? What about staffing? For example, city county employees versus chamber employees versus consultants? How will private businesses be able to participate and contribute if they choose to participate financially? And then how do we best coordinate the resources that are currently being spent on tourism marketing? Those are some of the general issues that we discussed at those two meetings. I would encourage you to take a look at the supporting materials that we provide. We provided basically the agenda materials from both of those meetings, even if you're, regardless of what your position is on public funding. There's some interesting information that we provided. There's the Visitors Bureau Marketing Plan in its current form. There's some historical information on TOT tax in the City of Crescent City and how those have trended going all the way back to 1964 or '65, I think, when it was first established. So there's some good information on, you know, the history of tourism funding and tourism marketing in Crescent City. I would encourage you to take a look at that if you didn't have a chance prior to tonight's meeting. One of the discussions, I don't think we changed a lot of minds during the two meetings so far, but we had some good discussions. And one of the things that this process gave me an opportunity to do was to research an idea that I've had for a while now, trying to kind of balance the desire to support marketing for tourism, but also minimize the impact on the city's general fund in these times where we don't really have a surplus of general fund dollars. And the idea that I had, based on some past experiences that I, past cities that I worked in, past agencies that I've worked in, would be the use of redevelopment dollars for tourism marketing. I give a couple of examples in the staff report of common uses of redevelopment funds for marketing. One common one throughout California is redevelopment agencies that have an auto mall or an auto plaza located within the project area boundaries. Sometimes those agencies will spend large sums of money to buy cable television advertising time. The cable ads will say, you know, "Come on down, shop for your next car" at such-and-such an auto mall, and that is seen as an economic development stimulative activity, the marketing, the use of the redevelopment dollars for marketing a particular group of businesses in a particular redevelopment project area. Another example that I'm familiar with would be maybe a redevelopment agency or a city that has a restaurant row located in its project area. The restaurants will get together, put together a marketing plan, might be print advertising, might be some electronic and some radio or television. The agency then provides funding for that campaign, and those restaurants have to be located in the redevelopment project area. So that's kind of what got me to thinking, would it be appropriate for us to use redevelopment funds for the marketing of tourism in our community where tourism and visitor-serving businesses are a big part of our economy and where we do have most of those located within the redevelopment project area? So I took that question to our redevelopment council, Iris Yang from McDonough, Holland and Allen. Iris, by the way, as well as Bob Black, have read this staff report. Iris felt like, I quoted her accurately, and she is comfortable with the use of Project Area 2 funds for tourism marketing with some conditions, and the staff report talks about those conditions. You would have to basically be able to show that specific visitor-serving businesses in the project area were being marketed and advertised through this campaign. And the idea that I suggested at both the ad hoc committee level and then individually talking to members of the Visitors Bureau would be, let's say, the Sunset Magazine ads that I know the VV has purchased recently and that I think, you know, based on their comments have yielded a lot of responses. You would have your magazine ad with a general "Come to Crescent City" message in the print ad. Down at the bottom, you would have something to the effect of, "While in Crescent City, visit these local lodging establishments," and you would have four or five of our redevelopment agency project area two hotels or motels listed there and their emblems and their contact information. That would be, according to Iris, an acceptable, defensible use of redevelopment funds because you're marketing specific businesses within the project area and you're still getting that general "Come to Crescent City" message across. So the staff report talks about some of that in more detail. It also talks about the fact that we would need to have a specific, clearly defined MOU between the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency and the Visitors Bureau as to the timeline, the funding, the amount of the funding, the conditions associated with, you know, it has to be marketing specific businesses located in the project area. So there would have to be a little more structure to our funding relationship than we've had in the past in order for the use of redevelopment funds to be acceptable. We also talked about, the staff report talks about some things that the ad hoc committee discussed, and that would be somehow guaranteeing, and this is in response to some of the concerns that Mr. Burns has raised in the past, guaranteeing that the Visitors Bureau is making a good-faith effort to recruit dollars from the private sector as well as the funding that they're getting from the city and the county, or in this case, the redevelopment agency. And so that might be something that we would include in the MOU. And it would be up to the agency board to kind of set the policy as far as how strict and defined do you want to be with that? Do you want to say that a good-faith effort is required, or do you want to say, as I suggest in the staff report, if the redevelopment agency is going to contribute $100,000, you must produce at least $40,000 or $30,000 in private funds for the overall campaign, so that there's a dollar or percentage requirement that they have to follow through on in order to get the public contribution? We also talked about something that I think the Visitors Bureau folks support, which is if their efforts result in a large increase in TOT revenue to the city. Let's say that our hotel bed tax revenues exceed $1 million. Right now, they're hovering between $850,000 and $900,000. If they went over $1 million, the Visitors Bureau would get a certain percentage of that dollar amount over the $1 million as kind of a performance incentive for the results of their marketing campaign. That's something that, you know, would not have to be included, but you could certainly choose to include that. So those are just some of the things that we talked about that you might want to include in an MOU. So it really is just something for the agency board's consideration. No one says we have to do it this way. It would be a way of keeping, having the city make a contribution but have it not come out of the general fund. And it's just an issue of, does the Visitors Bureau feel comfortable with some of the restrictions that would be, you know, associated with the use of redevelopment dollars? Also, we had talked about during the course of the committee meetings, making a multi-year commitment to the Visitors Bureau. I was talking, the proposals that we bounced around, I was talking about a three-year commitment. I've always been somewhat sympathetic to the Visitors Bureau arguments that it's hard to put together a really consistent, successful marketing campaign if you're going to have $100,000 from the city this, or the county, whoever it might be, this year, but next year, you're not going to have any, and then next year, you might have 25, or, you know, it's hard to do much planning and budgeting where you have that kind of uncertainty. So I had talked about, you know, possibly entering into an MOU that would be like a three-year term. And I'm now going to do tonight what I have jokingly called with the mayor sometimes a BFF, a Butler flip-flop, and I'm going to come off of that three-year, that multi-year commitment and suggest that because of the fact that we're still in a major analysis of our redevelopment agency finances, and we have the kind of uncertainty that we have about general fund revenues, the economy, the fact that we're still, we believe we're going to get close to balance this year, we're going to give you an opportunity next Monday night to make some choices that will balance the budget, but we're still really struggling along that balance versus deficit on the general fund. I'm a little uneasy with making a multi-year commitment of funding, whether it's redevelopment or general fund. So that's a little bit of a change from what I was talking about during the ad hoc committee discussions. But the Visitors Bureau representatives have also talked about, maybe we do a letter of commitment for more than one year that gives us an out clause, you know, if there's a major economic catastrophe that happens, or if you get, for example, a sewer rate initiative that passes and requires some restructuring of the general fund, you know, they're open to that kind of discussion, I think. So that's really ultimately a council or agency board policy decision you have to make as far as, are you interested in making that multi-year commitment? I understand why it's important from the Visitors Bureau's side of the table, but it also is kind of a scary commitment to make at this time for a variety of reasons for us from the city or the agency side. And I think that pretty much wraps up what I would have to say on the staff report. I know we do have some representatives from the Visitors Bureau here tonight, and I know that one of their goals certainly tonight is to, and I think it would be helpful, the city staff as well, would be to leave this evening with some kind of direction about what the funding level is going to be for this year for the Visitors Bureau. The reason being that Ken and I, over the next 72 hours, are putting together the finishing touches on the proposed budget that we'll be presenting to the council on Monday night. And it's not absolutely essential, but it would be helpful for us to know, you know, how much do we plug in in Visitors Bureau funding, if anything, and what is the funding source going to be for the next fiscal year at least, 2010, 2011? So thanks for sitting through all that. I will turn it back to the mayor.
I'm going to bring it back to the council, and do you have any questions for Mr. Butler?
A couple of questions I would have is, Mr. Butler, do we have an idea of how much money is in RDA Number 2? is in RDA Number 2 District at this time?
We know what it generates per year in revenue. The question of how much is available is something that is going to be subject to the financial analysis that is coming up over the next three to four months. The reason I say, the reason we're not totally certain is we know that we're going to have to pay back the pool loan with RDA 2 funding. And we have some flexibility in terms of how we structure that payback period, but, you know, we don't...
Wasn't there also some expenditures made from water?
Yeah, the water fund...
That needs to be paid back, is that in Project Area 2?
The water fund loaned money to the redevelopment agency. The redevelopment agency spent the money to do the pool rehab project. So the redevelopment agency pays back the water.
Oh, it's we pay back the water, okay.
Yeah. So we have a lot of latitude in terms of how we do that. But, you know, I think the question is, or if the question is, would there be enough in RDA 2 to contribute something in the $75,000 to $100,000 range for tourism marketing for this next year?
And then that would be verified ultimately by the financial. Is part of it also related to finding out how much taxes have been received for the more current quarters?
It's like, well, yeah, that's...
Regarding the TOT taxes?
Yeah, TOT, of course, goes into the general fund.
TOT, yeah, TOT goes into the general fund. He's actually asking this, I believe he's asking this board to completely go out of the box and make a decision that's not just going to affect our budget, but it's going to, it's not going to affect the general fund. It's only going to affect the RDA funds. And it's a complete policy change that he's asking us to consider. And on top of that, we have not had our RDA budget sessions yet, budget and...
Workshop.
Workshop. So we actually do not have dollars and cents in front of us, nor have we looked at what we would fund with those dollars based on what the community has said they want to happen in our RDA project zones.
Yeah, and one reason that I kind of have backed away from the three-year commitment at this time is that the whole point of having a redevelopment agency is to be able to issue bonds, issue debt. Gives you bond proceeds, which would be a large chunk of money that we can use for exactly the kinds of projects that the mayor is talking, the agency chair is talking about, the beachfront parks, the front streets, the downtown redevelopment. Once we know, and we will know certainly by the end of this calendar year, maybe October, November, how much we're going to be able to bond for and what the stream of RDA revenue will need to be to pay off those bonds over time, we'll know how much money there would be left for tourism marketing, if the council, if the agency board even chose tonight to authorize the use of RDA funds for tourism marketing. So I think what the agency chair is saying is, and I totally agree with it, we want to be, we want the board to be able to make informed decisions about the use of redevelopment money over a long period of time. And right now, we're not quite at a place, we're getting close, but we're not quite at a place where we have the ability to make those commitments for more than this current year.
Any other questions for Mr. Butler?
Yes, I have quite a few. I appreciate your thinking outside the box and looking for creative ways to fund the Visitors Bureau because I think that they are playing a crucial role in our community, so... But I'm interested in finding out why we don't have a report from the ad hoc committee in here so we can understand the whole picture. And I think it's kind of difficult for us to try and decide how much funding we can give them if we don't know what money's in the RDA. So, and I don't know about the notion of asking them to go and raise money to, from the private sector. I think that would be setting a kind of a precedent where we would be, say, asking the tri-agency that they would have to demonstrate raising money, for example, or, you know, where would you draw the line? We'd have Shoreline RV Park having to raise money to demonstrate that they're... You know, I don't know if that's a very good precedent for...
Shoreline RV Park is not a private entity. Belongs to the city.
Well, I mean, you know, you'd be asking the tri-agency to, I mean, I don't know if that's, because it's a partnership with more than one group. I don't see how we can ask them to do that. I don't think that we should be asking them to do something like that because they do bring in money. I mean, if you look at how steadily the TOT's raised, and specifically since we've had the Visitors Bureau, I don't think that that's a very good precedent to, you know, be asking them to do. So I'm not really big on that idea. But, so I'll be interested to hear why their report from the committee isn't in the report for us to have the whole picture here.
I think what Mr. Butler did was take what happened in the ad hoc committee and summarized it in his report and added information that he thought...
I thought he said that he didn't include it.
No, he said that this is his report. It wasn't anything that was put together by the Visitors Bureau.
And my assumption was that they would be here tonight to correct or expand upon things that they thought were not adequately covered in the report. And I think we have some very good spokes folks from...
Spokes folks.
From the Visitors Bureau so they can...
So I would think that it should have been included, actually. So that's my perspective, anyway.
I would offer, though, that I think that the characterization or the summary that Mr. Butler's provided is an accurate reflection of the ad hoc meetings that Mr. Burns and I and others attended.
Oh, I don't, that's not my understanding.
So what you're saying is you think that the Visitors Bureau should have provided a report, not the ad hoc committee?
Well, there's other perspectives from other members of the ad hoc committee, from what I've heard.
Okay, so the Visitors Bureau has told you that they don't think Mr. Butler's report is correct?
It's not a reflection of some members of the ad hoc committee, so I'll let them speak.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, in the RDA 2, what percentage of our city motels, hotels, fall within RDA 2?
70 to 80 percent.
Okay, so most of them would qualify by being advertised. If we chose to fund the Visitors Bureau through RDA 2, 70 or 80 percent of the motels would qualify as being represented.
That's true.
Okay. And just, I think, to clarify in my mind, Catherine, I think the tri-agency is set up to grow businesses, to grow new businesses. And the Visitors Bureau advertises for established businesses that are already there. The Visitors Bureau is not trying to plant a new motel. Well, the tri-agency is trying to grow businesses in the county. That's not the idea of Visitors Bureau. So there's the difference in how you spend your money. That's just my...
The Visitors Bureau is actually, I think their prime statement of goal is the next visitor or tourist to our area, to our city.
Right, to sustain the established businesses.
Right, the established businesses. It gives them, it advertises for those established businesses.
Correct. Donna, do you have anything?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Do, I'm just going to open it up to public comment and open it up first to the Visitors Bureau members, if you're present.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hello.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
So Chris Howard, representing as chair of the Delmar County Crescent City Visitors Bureau. First, I'd like to say we also enjoy the creative thinking, but want to reemphasize that the Visitors Bureau is not necessarily concerned how the city comes about finding the dollars. It's more concerned as how those dollars are invested once they're found. It's really the city's concern on how those dollars are sourced.
It'd be nice if we could just go out and find money.
Yeah, it would, actually. A lot of us are trying to do that right now. And some of us are having success, some not. But the most important piece of this, and I think it was touched on by several council members already, is that the mayor did form an ad hoc committee with council approval. And we have met several times. And before you is actually a report from the committee that Rod chaired for us, and Dennis, and Charles Slerke were representatives, also Michael Sullivan, Cheryl Corpstein, Billy K. Gavin, Steve Wakefield, myself, and Ron Phillips also joined us in those meetings. And on our second meeting, and I think the report that council member Murray was referring to is our February 2nd meeting, which was several options that were laid out by the city manager for us to take a look at. And the committee did come up with a conclusion and a strategy, which is option A, the option you see before you this evening. And obviously, the RDA discussion did take place during those ad hoc committee meetings. However, the committee did have a recommendation to go with what would be the Butler Plan, option A. So as you can see before you tonight, the Butler Plan, as it was lined out, did not consider at that time RDA funding. It did consider continued funding out of the general fund, which would have been TOT, which is still the city's highest revenue source, if I remember correctly, from Ken McDonnell's projections at the city workshop. In addition, with a recommendation for a three-year memorandum of understanding with the Visitors Bureau. And also with a good faith effort to go out and recruit private sector dollars, which the VB, through various sources, has been successful in doing the last several years without the city contribution to help us get to that benchmark, which has been given to us, which is about $230,000 a year, which was that necessary level to actually make an effective marketing effort in this community. And then the last performance standard was an incentive-type plan, which was also mentioned here this evening, which is if we did have some achievement over that million-dollar mark, that some of that would spin back into the marketing plan so we could begin to build on that success and reinvest those dollars into the growth of community. And so there was also two other options lined out that evening. One, the Butler Plan, option B, and then the one, option C, which was the Fox News, Sean Hannity, Rush Limbaugh Plan for no public money, period. But the committee did recommend going forward with option A at that February meeting. And that's what I was here to present to you this evening in the form of that memo. We think, and...
So Chris, am I understanding correctly that you guys agree that option A is kind of what you guys discussed?
Option A is what we took the most time discussing. I think we had consensus from everybody in the committee at that time, including council member Burns. And I'd stand corrected if council member Burns remembers something differently at this time. But there was consensus going forward with that option A plan.
So Mr. Butler's report is just more information?
Correct. It's actually going out, and we appreciate those efforts. The one thing I want council to take note of is how those dollars are restricted. And what I mean by that is we have to market specific entities. And as you recall, you stated several times this evening, is that our mission is to market the next new customer to Delmar County. And not necessarily a specific business. If you look at our marketing materials, it's marketing the region, it's marketing our community. It's not marketing the Hampton Inn, it's not marketing the Best Western, it's not marketing the Chart Room, it's marketing our region. My fear is, is if we begin to market a specific business, it's going to be an unfair expenditure of public dollars to recruit the next new customer to this area. Not that we couldn't find a unique way of doing that, but it does present some concern to us. And yes, the commitment for long-term funding is important for the budget component of this. We appreciate Mr. Butler's comments on that. But how we get that next step to actually set a budget so we can begin to plan in the years to follow, continue to have the county money coming in, and then continue to get the reinvestment from the private sector was the real big concern coming out of that last meeting.
Okay.
So unless you have any questions, I'll go sit back down at this time.
Any questions for Chris?
Just to clarify, I think I said I don't mind $100,000 coming from the city as long as it wasn't out of general fund. And if we could find a different revenue stream for that money, that's...
And there is one real big distinction. If you look at the agenda from February 3rd, option A, it's, "City provides $100,000 per year from general fund reserves." And I noticed in Chris's report here, it says "general fund revenues." I'm not accusing Chris of doing anything malicious, except that I want to make sure it's understood as the discussion moves forward, that any general fund, funds that are approved basically this year and probably next year, you know, unless we have a big turnaround in revenues, are coming from reserves. You know, we don't have extra general fund money to spend this year. So I did make that, we did have that discussion during the February 3rd meeting, that it would be, it wouldn't be from current extra money in the general fund. It would have to be coming from reserves.
Well, I don't think, I think that we've given $100,000 for this year. And the discussion was going to lead into, can we afford to put money into the new budget for 2010, 2011 for the Visitors Bureau? And as I've said before, you know, I'm, previously have been a very large supporter of the Visitors Bureau and its mission. But not so much anymore. And I am, I've just lost some confidence. And, but more important, we have a huge liability right now with our lawsuits and the continued expenses that we are incurring due to the Miss Westfall lawsuits, some other lawsuits happening, and then also the prospect of our sewer initiative being on the ballot, which would severely affect our general fund. And I don't think that we're going to have all the answers when we go into budget session next week.
Yeah, Chris, that's what's going to be my question, is what happens if the sewer rate rollback passes in November? Then what happens to our budget and what happens to the Visitors Bureau?
The Visitors Bureau, most likely, and I can't speak for the entire committee on this because it hasn't been discussed, but it most likely will go away without adequate funding. As you know, the reason the Visitors Bureau was set up was to market that next new customer and help us grow this community. And obviously, it's the largest revenue source for your general fund also. But I can't see sustaining the Visitors Bureau on the county funding alone and the limited private sector contribution that we currently have. It's tough to get private sector contribution without the largest TOT-type piece coming into play with the city council's support. Mr. Butler did line out an option for you this evening that I think is a reasonable consideration, which would be essentially a letter that would provide some assurances to our larger contributors that if things don't necessarily go the direction as far as the rate rollbacks are concerned, is that you guys pick up the ball and reconsider it in November, once there's some security that the general fund hasn't changed. If that could be considered, it might help us adequately raise revenues, not only from private sources, but also to get the contribution in from the county. If we knew, if we knew how to plan for, let's say, $100,000, but everybody would completely understand if an initiative were to occur and it was successful, the city backing out at that time.
Yeah, any MOU that we're entering into right now has to have that caveat because if her sewer initiative were to be successful, a lot of things are going away.
Yep, understood.
Including probably our pool being closed and city police being cut severely and all kinds of... all kinds of things.
Yeah, we understand, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to open this up for general public comment. Is there any public comment on this issue? Mr. Miles?
I'm like Mr. Butler. I'm not opposed to giving money to the Chamber of Commerce. I believe the Chamber of Commerce has a track record. When we farmed, when we started giving money to the Tourist Bureau, some of the council members at that time believed that the city should have the right to audit the Tourist Bureau, because we are, were given them city funds. My concern is that the funding for redevelopment funds are based on, what is it, no, is it, it's a fancy word, but it's called increment funding. It's also based on the repayment of loans that we make in Redevelopment I and II. When we loan money to individuals, they pay it back, and they should be paying it back in a timely manner. My concern, recently I talked to Jay Freeman, is I subscribe to the Sunset Magazine. Well, a few, a number of issues back, the Tourist Bureau put a "N" in there. Well, that is helpful. They ran it for maybe two issues, and you haven't seen it. If we give them money, Dennis has always had an argument, and his argument has been that the members of the chamber and the businesses that we are encouraging, like on 101 and North and South, where all these hotels are, that they kick into, because we are giving them money from RDA II that's actually meant to encourage businesses to make loans and, you know, other improvements within that area, and then we have to set, have the set-aside money for our low-income housing. That comes out of that pocket of money, too. So, my recommendation tonight would be, when you find out the financial status of redevelopment II, that you consider the gentleman that smiles like a cacher cat and offer him a little, some pennies, not a dollar.
Thank you, Richard. Ms. Cooper?
Again, I, this town is not overflowing in money. Our funds are scarce, and we have to use them very wisely, and get the, get the most benefit. I really, although technically redevelopment funds might be allocated here, I don't think it's really the best use of the money redevelopment funds, and I don't think it's really in the spirit of what they should be used for, when our town looks the way it does. And our nature is beautiful, fantastic, people come here, and we, I don't feel, we have a great difficulty in getting people to the redwoods. We have an advertising campaign that money can't buy. We have the redwood trees, we have the national park. People come from around the world. The little bit extra icing-on-the-cake advertisement that the Bureau can provide, you know, is, it's nice, but our essential effort has to be to make this town look beautiful and presentable. I go and I see our harbor sign, "Hey, see how faded? Crescent City Harbor Sign, it's all faded and drippy drips on it, next to the, one of the most fancy hotels that we have, right behind, you know, those ponds there, and then it sits adjacent to the harbor, and then there's that little thrift shop. Well, in order for someone from the fanciest hotel to get to the harbor, their car will fall through the ground in potholes. Who owns that? It's owned by Hamburgers. Is Hamburgers having a hard time? Let's give them some money. I don't, I don't know what it is, but our town looks like crap, and, and we, we need to do something about that. People coming from Europe, from Japan, from Holland, from Germany, I meet them all on our redwood trails, and they need to want to stay here, and we need to make this town beautiful, and every small scrap of money that you have, that you can get your hands on to make this town more beautiful, is where you need to be spending your money. Thank you.
Well, I think a lot of the places that may look like crap start in our own backyards and our businesses that aren't being taken care of. We can all take care of our own properties and our own businesses. I think the city is in a pretty good job of cleaning up the downtown area and keeping our parks beautiful, and so, I walk, I walk down the street sometimes, and I see people that aren't taking care of their own. Mr. Hoon?
Hi, Tim Hoon, county resident, just barely two blocks outside the city.
You moved out of the city? Oh, man.
Maybe I'll get annexed in, though, that's another agenda item. This is a great topic to bring up, and I really applaud Mr. Butler coming up with a kind of a creative solution. Where do you get any money when you don't want to spend your limited funds that are at risk, et cetera? And it's just noteworthy to mention what's going on right now in our area. Hospitality 101, in the next nine months, we'll probably spend half a million dollars training the staff that work at these businesses, many of them right here in Crescent City, supplying them, supplying the employees with the skills and knowledge they need, the maps that they need, the tools that they need to do their job, when a, to talk to a visitor and get them to stay another day. However, we don't have anyone to attract that next visitor, that's, that's not part of, within the scope of what we do. Someone, someone has to do that. This Explore Del Norte website is a beautiful website, I think does a good job of that. Other efforts that I've seen the Visitors Bureau put forth, I think do a good job of bringing visitors to the area, and I, I wish I had thought of this redevelopment idea. It's brilliant. Don't spend any of your general funds, spend the extra redevelopment money while you're waiting to come up with the, the big plans that you can spend, sell bonds for, and fund them through that. So, anyway, and the other thing I just want to mention is, that it's kind of funny, TOT revenue is, this is your income stream. When you invest to bring more visitors here, and there's more motel rooms, you get more revenue. So, don't be, you know, whatever that's called, penny, you know, penny wise and pound foolish. If you don't spend money on the Visitors Bureau, your TOT money, you're going to, I would say, see that go down, because other communities are aggressively marketing themselves. Are we going to stay in Humboldt and stay in Curry County? So, just, you know, think about that. And if you can spend the money without really any impact on the general fund through a creative marketing plan for 80% of the, 70% of the businesses, that's a great idea.
Tim?
Yeah.
Is any part of Hospitality 101, is any part of that funding dealing with marketing and tourism?
Absolutely.
Oh, maybe you ought to talk to Chris.
We are, well, in fact, so Hospitality 101, we're, we're going to pay to reprint that whole map, like $30,000, to print however many copies of that map we need, because the Visitor Bureau doesn't have the money. So, they're being creative and looking for solutions, and so, we're doing-
Didn't that, didn't that map used to get printed by the chamber?
Yeah, but the, the chamber's broke, and Visitor Bureau is broke, and, and we can print that as a tool to give out to businesses in kind of a tour guide, tour, tour guide toolkit, is what we call it, and then just print enough maps for general use. So, absolutely, we, so, once a visitor is here, if there's something, we can print stuff to give them once they're here, but we can't do the advertisements to, to come here.
Outright. Thanks, Tim. Karen, is our light system working?
Uh, yeah, it is.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Bueller?
Ellen Bueller and I live in the city. The last few weeks, I've had the opportunity to meet with several entertainers that have been in the area. Their comments have been, "This is a great area." They're all positive. So, I don't think it's as bad as some people are saying it is.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I'm going to close public comment. I know I was with Buck Pierce and the crew from Canada last week for two days, and out filming our area, and they couldn't say enough things about how beautiful it is. Okay, bring it back to the council. What's your pleasure?
I guess I'd like to go through a few things. I have not lost confidence in our Visitors Bureau. I think they're doing an admirable job, basically, while being hogtied of sorts. I appreciate Mr. Butler's creative approach, and looking at the RDA, my frustration is, I feel like we have half the information, and probably not the most important half of the information, to actually make a long-term decision, which is what this is about. It's about sustainable funding for the Visitor Bureau. Truly, our general fund is seriously taxed with the pending legal actions and so forth, but the tourism is on a consistent increase. Each of the last five years, there's been a $100,000 gain in the TOT taxes that the city has received, with the exception of last year, I think it was down about 7%. The first quarter of this year is reporting that it's actually up. So, tourism is effective, and it's happening, and it's increased 50-fold since its inception in 1964, from $20,000 annually to just short of $1 million a year ago. So, tourism, to me, is the economic engine for our city. If we can't sustain tourism, then the city is not going to be sustained, because the one feeds on the other. And, it's a chicken and the egg thing. It's a partnership of the city, the county, and the harbor, and the other partners are waiting to see about the commitment on the part of the city on a long-term basis. What we do or don't do has a direct impact on what they will choose to do, or not do. It's also a challenge to go out, for the Visitor Bureau, to go out and raise private sector money, which in the past year, they've raised 31% of their budget through the private sector. So, they're, they're hands-on, and they're involved, and they're bringing money in. But you can imagine them going out, trying to approach the private sector, and the private sector is asking, "Well, where's the city in this picture, and are they going to make a commitment and be committed to tourism?" And so, it's a chicken and egg thing. They're, they're waiting to see what the city does on a long-term basis. I think it's true that the Visitor Bureau isn't concerned where the money comes from, if it's the, the general fund reserves or the RDA Area II money. It's more about, is there going to be something there? How much is going to be there? And what, for how long are we going to be a partner? I'll also mention that in Eureka and Humboldt, they put 80% of their TOT taxes back into tourism. So, they're truly growing their tourism there in a progressive way. And I think, in the end, that, that we will reap what we sow. If we don't participate at an adequate level, the, the, the Visitor Bureau has a very specific business plan, they act on it, they follow through. They're dealing with adversities, and yet, everything is moving forward, but it's also a business where you have to plan ahead. It's, you have to do it a quarter in advance, and, and there was a, a great advertisement for Del Norte County, right along with Mendocino County and Morro Bay and the likes, which I think does have a positive influence on people. And then when you see the hits on the website, it's incredible the way that it's going. The trend is, it's up 150%, 200% in many categories, and even in these recessionary times. So, I, I think it's time for the city to step up in, at least in the best interest of tourism and sustaining the Visitor Bureau, of saying that we will put an MOU together and support it as best we can until things change. And if, if things change, and we find out something different because of the economics of the RDA II, or the ongoing drama with the economics of the general fund, then things will change accordingly.
So, are you, what are you saying? Are you putting a motion on the floor? Are you, do you know where you're going to get the money?
I don't know where the money comes from.
Okay.
I mean, the, the first blush by Mr. Butler is, there might be $75,000 or $100,000, and I don't know what that represents, what portion that represents of the whole RDA II funding. So, I mean, we need to see the whole picture, but-
Right, and I just feel like the whole picture is, with our RDA, is not, TOT has never been part of the picture, so we really need to look at how that's going to affect it, especially after our town hall meeting, where we had goals that came out of that from the public, and how they want those RDA funds to be expended, once we find out what those funds are. So, I think all of that needs to be included. I'm not saying that having the funds come out of this is impossible, and I think that it is a creative idea to, to, you know, to consider, but until we have the whole picture, and we have the outcome of the town hall meeting we just had weeks ago, and those projects in the downtown area prioritized, and a budget and big picture kind of put together, to see, okay, now is there $50,000 or $100,000 to take out of that fund to give to the Visitors Bureau? I don't think it would be- I don't think it would be smart of us to just do, make that action without having all of the information.
There was one more question. You said we were auditing our TOT taxes and so I had, we'd had some recent dialogue regarding that. Now, how soon will that audit be completed? You said when?
Yeah, I think we're looking probably at late summer for that. So August, September. The consultant, the same consultant that's doing the TOT revenue audit is also working on our franchise fee, utility franchise fee revenue, that auditing of those revenues as well. They started with the utilities franchise revenue audit. That will run for probably another sixty days worth of work and then they're gonna take on the TOT audit. And I think there's a belief, there's been a suggestion out there that, not so much from visitors bureau members that are here tonight, but some others, that there's gonna be this big pot of gold, we're gonna discover all of this extra TOT revenue. I hope that's true. I hope they're right, but I wouldn't necessarily bet on that. But I, as far as trying to answer your question, when will the information be in? No earlier than September first on the TOT revenue audit.
Because that's much, that date's been moved back because it was supposed to be like at the end of June or something before. So, I, but I'm with Mr. Slert. I, and I, and I really appreciate Mr. Hoon's comments because I believe that he is right, that other communities are aggressively marketing their communities and this is very competitive right now and that, as Ms. Westfall said, you know, that being a penny foolish, penny wise and pound foolish, you know, it, we, it is an investment to market our, our community and that the TOT shows that we've increased our revenues this way. That's all general fund money, the, the TOT taxes. So I think it's worth our while to invest in the visitors bureau and market ourselves through them because I think it's, I mean, it's demonstrated success. I, I'm not really clear why, why you lost faith, but I, I think that we've really demonstrated through the visitors bureau that they've done some great marketing and that we do have a, a large return on our dollar for marketing that way. So I think it's a good move and actually I would like to see us direct staff to put together the notion of the redevelopment monies, finding out how much money we do have and then putting a package together for the visitors bureau that way minus, so I'd like the Butler Plan Three minus item three.
I think, I think the challenge though is the, the visitor bureau has a, a, a drop-dead date coming up of a new fiscal year. And if we don't have some direction or commitment prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, I, I think that they will probably be out of business.
I think much of what both of you have said is very true and, and I agree with a lot of what you've said, but neither one of you has given a qualitative plan on how to pay for it, other than just put a package together.
The RDA money is what I was saying.
So you're saying that you are going to take a hundred thousand dollars for three years out of the RDA funds without knowing how much money we have?
That was our city manager's recommendation.
Okay.
As we can do it.
Well, he actually said that he was not going in that direction in the beginning of his, at the end of his report.
I am now backing off of a multi-year commitment of redevelopment until we have a, a real full analysis to know where the redevelopment agency stands financially. So if we're gonna use redevelopment...
And I, and I encourage you both to think about what the RDA is for and the funds, where those funds are actually supposed to be directed and the projects that we just discussed in the town hall meeting that were priorities to the community.
But also the dilemma is the TOT taxes at plus or minus a million dollars revenue to the city is brought in by the very businesses that we're talking about. And, and remember, that's, that's not all that the businesses are bringing in. That's only the taxable, which is ten percent. So they're really bringing in nine to ten million dollars circulating in the region and the community. And that's a, a big number.
I agree with you.
Okay, this is what I would like, a hundred thousand dollars from the RDA money the first year and then a, then we decide a percentage. In, in this memorandum, we're going to agree to a percentage from here on out.
Okay.
Anything for me too?
I would just like to say, Catherine, that I don't think we've lost faith in the visitors bureau. I think that reality just hit us like a bucket of water and that is that we have to be aware of fiscal responsibility and maintain a strict budget, spend only what we have.
I think Charles said it best, there's nine million dollars coming into private industry. We get nine hundred thousand. So there's eight hundred and some thousand dollars left out there.
Million.
Million.
Eight million.
Eight million. And that's, and they're, and they're maybe getting one percent of that. Private industry's giving one percent of that. One.
Ten.
One. Eighty thousand dollars comes from private industry to visitors bureau.
I don't know what I'm, I think what, what he's saying is if there's ten million dollars coming into the community in hotels...
We get the...
And we get a million of it. That's, that's ten percent.
Right.
Okay.
But the private sector's giving eighty-one thousand dollars, which is about one percent.
Oh, you mean in their budget?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh. Well, actually BiCoastal gave them a quarter of a million dollars four years ago and they haven't used it all, only about half of it, so. And that is private industry.
Yes, it is.
Can't move forward without a motion.
I would like to make a motion that the city recommend a hundred thousand dollar contribution to the visitor bureau for the next fiscal year, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, with a one-year commitment and the possibility of two additional years, depending on the outcome of the financial audits and accounting for the RDA Two funds.
Is this from the RDA monies the first year?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
I think it's premature, myself.
Okay.
I agree. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Westfall?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Byrne?
No.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shlong?
No. I would, however, like to continue this discussion when we have our budget session and look at...
Me too.
...what we can afford to budget for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven fiscal year, after we've just donated one hundred thousand dollars to them. And also look at the option of RDA funds when we have our workshop, which will all be taking place in the next week to sixty days.
Back to our agenda, we are actually going to adjourn unless, did you guys have anything to report out on? On RDA?
No.
Anything from the board members? Okay, we're going to adjourn and reconvene as the council?
Sixteen.
Or sixteen? I'm gonna do the smoking for the kids.
I thought the kids were...
Yeah, that's number nine.
All right, sorry.
Okay, we're gonna open our general council meeting up to general public comment. And so any member of the audience can come forward to the podium and speak for three minutes on any subject of your choosing. If it's already on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that agenda item comes up. And we can't take discussion, we can't partake in discussion on anything that's not agendized this evening, but we can take it and put it on a future agenda. And if you are new to the public comment system, we have a light system up here. When you come up to the podium, the green light will come on when you start speaking. When you have thirty seconds left, the yellow light comes on and when your time is up, the red light comes on. So I'll open this up now to general public comment.
I'm Jackie Slocovich and I'm actually here for two reasons tonight, but I represent Del Norte Soccer Association and I am here to tell the city thank you, the maintenance and grounds department. I had an issue recently with a team and they came down to the soccer fields at Beachfront, they mowed them twice, they, I think it's called scooping them, and they have taken and done that every possible week they can without the rain. And Jerry came to my help, Jim came to my help, everybody was very sweet. And I just want to publicly acknowledge that we really appreciate that because that serves normally in the fall five hundred and some of our kids. In this case, it's for a traveling team, but I do wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miles?
I'm Kelly.
Sorry.
Kelly, I have about three concerns and I also wanna thank Jerry, our parks people, for all the hard work they've been doing under our weather conditions. Recently, there was a letter in the newspaper from the Disc Golf people criticizing how Jerry planted the cypress trees. Well, as a master gardener, Jerry created a windbreak. I hope when the power company gives us our tree grant, we'll see more windbreaks in our parks. I wanna also thank Mr. Butler for allowing me to volunteer and play with the city again. I've been sticking posies around town as an RSV volunteer. So I'd like to encourage this audience who want to and have the time, you know, when you're retired, you have time on your hands, that if we wanna make this town more welcome for our tourists, we should step forward and do more ourselves. Also, both of my friends have created a society and I would hope the four of you would join that society. It's called SMART.
Called what?
It's called SMART.
Oh, SMART.
It's the Society for Rational Thinking. There's some very cute posters that have been printed that I'd like to see a lot of the businesses in this town posting their windows because it goes to the issue of our sewer initiative. We all need to both know on that. But I have a...
Thirty seconds, Richard.
I have a concern and I'd like to bring it to everybody's attention immediately. And I'd like to give it to the secretary of tri-agency.
Okay, you're addressing the council tonight, not tri-agency.
I know.
Okay.
I talked to Mr. Butler today and I deeply believe that an agenda item needs to be pulled and the memorandum of understanding that you signed as a secretary of the tri-agency in Block and because it says the city of Del Norte...
Okay, wrap up, Richard.
And it makes our director take statistics to a non-existing city and nobody caught it that in order to move ahead with something, it needs to go back to the tri-agency. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, are you, can you please check the lights? They're not working.
No, the, the timing light.
It's just the red light seems to be out.
The yellow one flashes and then goes out and there's no red light. Hi.
Chris Chesser Cat Howard, county resident.
I think you have a beautiful smile, Chris, just for the record.
I appreciate that, Madam Mayor. It was, it was great to see Del Norte County or Crescent City, this beautiful town of Crescent City named again in Forbes Magazine for being one of the prettiest little towns in America. It's a great honor to see and it speaks very highly of the way this community's kept up. I know we keep going around in circles for many years on this same issue, but I wanna bring something to your attention this evening as it relates back to funding and finding secured funding. And the initiative over the sewer rates that Ms. Westfall asked tonight, it does affect everything and it presents a lot of concern and angst within the council and especially when it comes to funding decisions. And the community could appreciate that and the visitors bureau could appreciate that. And that's why we want you to look at every option possible because as Mr. Slert stated, it is the largest percentage of general fund revenue coming into your budgets currently. We'd like to help make that change, make that effective in helping to grow that budget and see some revenue to reinvest, but it's difficult to plan ahead when you have these forthcoming initiatives. And I don't wanna see it affect the community the way I think it's gonna affect it, but we'll see how it goes. I'll continue to speak out against that initiative until it's on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment?
Could I make a comment from...
Oh, yes. You have to come to the podium.
Would you like me, oh, I will certainly do that.
You have to take the minute, Eric.
I would just like to address the city council with regard to the We Work Group. And the We Work Group is a group of agencies, the city, the county, the school district, RHS, CAN, the Wild Rivers Community Foundation, and the California Endowment, Del Norte Child Care Council, and I'm...
Where's my partner?
Several other agencies that are involved in social service and helping folks. We are currently trying to figure out a way to feed our children during the summer. And I'm talking about our most needy children who wouldn't ordinarily have anything to eat during the summer unless there's school where they would receive their meals for the day. And so I'm encouraging the city council to come, I know you guys have a budget hearing, a budget meeting, but to come to a meeting or participate in a meeting if possible and perhaps even send some staff to a meeting on May, Monday, May tenth. It will be at five thirty in the evening at the Family Resource Center and help us address the issue so that we can feed the little ones during the summer months. So we're looking for time, talent, and treasure.
And for your, for the record, could you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Karen Phillips.
Just teasing.
I am, I am the county resident.
Actually, Karen and I discussed this today and we've, her group has found that there are a lot of kids in our community that are going hungry when they're not going to school and not, not receiving a lunch at school. So they are, all of the agencies that are interested in taking care of that problem are coming together and trying to address the issue. And I would love to see the city play a role and I'm not sure how we can do that, but basically they're looking for either funding, gas to deliver the food, because what's happening is that usually they can provide the food to the kids during summer school. And if the kids aren't going to summer school, the, the facilities are open because they're, they're providing summer school. they're providing summer school, and so the kids can come there and eat during the day. Well, because of the budget cutbacks, the school system is not providing summer school this, this year. And so we have to find a way to get the food to these kids. And so they're looking for funding, they're looking for gas money to drive the buses or whatever vehicles to deliver the food, or they're looking for volunteers to help get the food out there to the kids. And/or creative ideas on, on ways to make it happen. So I wish, I wish we could be at that meeting. It's the tenth, the same time as our budget meeting. So I really would like to see a city representative, and maybe the council could provide some input to the manager on some thoughts or ideas. And then I would love to see us be able to help move that initiative forward. It's probably the most important thing we can, we've talked about tonight. So, thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment and move on to item number nine. The reason many of you are here, and thank you for your patience. Tonight, we are going to consider and adopt the second reading, ordinance number 756, amending the Crescent City municipal code, chapter 9.17, to prohibit smoking in public parks, playgrounds, and other public places. We will waive full reading and read by title only. And Ms. Martha Rice has led the, the progress on this, but I believe Mr. Black will be following up this evening. So do you have anything to add, Mr. Black?
No, Mayor, I think it was pretty thoroughly discussed at your last meeting. Martha's memo is still good. The ordinance in front of you is the same as you voted on at your last meeting to introduce the ordinance.
I think there was a couple minor changes. I don't see where she's crossed anything out, so I'm assuming she made the changes. It was, it was a small change, and it was something she and I both agreed on. So it was, probably in the minutes.
There was a typo, is that?
Yeah, it was, it was something minor.
Okay.
Do you have any feet to twenty-five feet?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, well, the change has been made to twenty-five feet, so that tells me she probably made any other changes that you requested.
No, it's not, actually.
Okay.
So on item number four, it says no smoking within fifty feet of the entrance to any building, open to the general public. And in paragraph B, it says twenty-five feet.
Let's see, item number four, I'm not sure. Oh, yeah, this is just the staff memo, so if the, the change as I read it has been made in the ordinance itself, which is what you're actually voting on. At least what I see in the first bullet on the top of page four, in the-
Okay.
Other, other references to the number of feet, all, like on page eight, there's two different references, those have both been made twenty-five.
So basically, this all started with a, a movement from our kids in our community, and they started out by going around and picking up thousands of cigarette butts in our community and brought those to our attention. And so this council took their hard work and their stand against smoking where the kids are playing to heart. And we've had several public meetings. This is the second public, part of the public process for the public hearings. And the last council meeting, we had probably at least twenty-five kids stand up and, and talk to us about how important it was to not be around secondhand smoke and to not have to play in their parks where people were littering with their cigarette butts. And the fact that they went to Kidstown just in itself and picked up thousands of cigarette butts made a huge statement to this council. So they have become part of the public process and a very important part, and we're very proud of their input. And so we're here tonight to move forward with the decision that was made at the last meeting. And so before we move forward, I will take any further public comment. Nancy?
Good evening, I'm Nancy Rivera, and I work, I live in the city and the Friday Night Mentoring Coordinator for Del Norte County. Our Friday Night Life is housed in the Department of Health and Human Services in Public Health Branch. And we're here tonight, and I just want to tell you that we didn't know that you guys were going to read this until today at twelve o'clock. I went to the high school, and I told those kids, they're going to read the, the ordinance tonight, you want to come? These kids left school, left home for school this morning, and they haven't been back. Most of them have been with me and Smith Rivera doing mentoring, and some of the girls been practicing for the dance concert. So they haven't eaten dinner yet, and they haven't done their homework. So I just wanted to-
Next time, you have to have her tell me that, so I can move the item forward in the agenda. That's how it works.
I, I didn't tell you that to feel, to make you feel bad, just to tell you how important it is for them. And some of these kids here in the audience, they've been picking up cigarette butts for six years in the park. So I don't want to point at nobody in general. So Joshua and Haines, twin Haines, what you were saying. And so they, they feel very, very much about this, and that's, that's why we are here.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thanks. Mr. Miles?
Somebody needs to buy them dinner.
Well, I got some good news for you, Catherine. After I speak here, I'm going to leave because I have to go take an insulin shot. So I'm not going to keep you guys here till midnight. I want to report something. Saturday and yesterday, I was at First Five. I can honestly report that by posting a sign, no smoking in the area, that there was not a single cigarette butt in the parking lot, flower beds. But I can't say that for the sheriff's office and the courthouse. So I would hope that when you pass this in the next three days, that a letter be sent to the county administration about the smoking situation at the courthouse. It's a state building, and it's not supposed to be any smoking on state grounds. And sheriff's office, the butt receptacle smells so bad that it is actually gagging. So, good night, all. But please take in consideration the material I gave Ms. Phillips.
Thank you. All right, Richard. Is there any other public comment? Jackie?
Jackie Slukovich. I will say that in the fourteen years I've been president from Delnort U.Soccer, that the city has been very good about following our policy for no smoking when kids are around. The parents signed that, and they have always helped us take in, make it stick, and, and so just having this in the ordinance will even make it easier now. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Any parting words? Okay. Oh, yes.
Sorry, I'm kind of new to this.
Just state your name and tell us if you live in the city or the county.
My name is Lilo. I live in the city, and for years, I've actually been picking up cigarette butts at the park, at the beach, just in like lot of places with Nancy, our advisor. And it's really fun. We actually get to like see how much that people smoke around our parks when we're playing around, not just us, but then us younger sisters and just people all around. People come in, new people, like tourists, they come in, and then they realize that there's so many cigarette butts all around. We actually have the time to like, within the weekends, to go pick it up and collect them and count how much. We actually do pick up and realize that we are actually endangering the parks by throwing cigarette butts on the floor, and that we feel grateful that we have the time to go pick it up, and that you guys are passing the law that there should be no smoking around the parks within the areas, which is good, and we thank you for that.
Thank you very much for everything that you've done, too. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And that means all of you. You've, you've led by example, and that's one of the most important things you can learn when you're growing up, is to lead by example. So I respect each and every one of you. Thanks. Okay, that being said, bring it back to the council for a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I'd move that we move to approve ordinance number 756, an ordinance of City of Crescent City, amending chapter 9.17 of the municipal code to prohibit smoking in public parks, playgrounds, and other public places.
I'll second that. Okay, do I need to pull the vote? Ordinance, please pull the vote. Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Westfall?
Yes.
Commissioner Slert?
Yes.
Chairman Shlong?
Yes. Thank you.
You may all go eat now. Okay, we're going to move on to business item number ten, which is to consider and approve payment thirty-five for wall and construction and stover engineering for our wastewater treatment plants. Are there any questions from the council? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'd move to approve the payment number thirty-five for wall and construction and stover engineering in voice number seven, six, six, or seven, eight, six, six.
Second.
Okay, please pull the vote. Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray, excuse me, I'm getting all my titles moved up here.
That's okay, I answered.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
And Mayor Shlong?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to new business, we're going to receive a report on our completed street maintenance rehab projects over the past three years, and an update on our upcoming street projects, including our citywide micro-surfacing.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, if you guys have probably noticed, we have a, on the next item on the agenda, we are going to ask you guys to approve two contracts for our upcoming ORA projects. But first, I'd like to take you back actually five years to take a look at all the projects that we have completed as a public works department since 2005. As we, as we take a look at all these projects, I'd like you to think about a couple of things. Number one, look at the funding source that we have done the majority of these projects with. You'll notice that it is not general fund. It's typically grants via either the RSTP funding or the STIP funding, and so I'd like to thank Tamar Buchanan and the local transportation commission for helping us through those and, and getting us through those projects. In 2005, we, we completed a joint project with the county. This was on Pacific Avenue, basically from H Street all the way to A Street. It was funded by RSTP, and the contractor was Granite Construction. This project was completed on time and within budget of right around $200,000. In 2006, we moved on to Harding Street. This project was approximately five city blocks, included various ADA ramps and driveways as well. This was funded by the STIP funding source, which is a state funding source. It was also completed by Granite Construction in combination with Gavin to do some of the pedestrian improvements. And the final construction amount was right around $160,000, again, on time and within You can see this is just a shot of Harding, kind of a before and after right at the Truman intersection there where this was a-
Did it all for $160,000?
Sixty thousand. Sixty thousand, yeah, we wish.
Hundred and sixty K.
This was Fifth Street, a project we completed in 2007. Again, Granite Construction was the contractor, and the funding source was RSTP in combination with some general fund dollars. You can see that this project was actually road reconstruction, in which we got down into the base, found there was lots of organic materials in that base, and so we had to do quite the improvement to the structural section.
Eric? Is that the kind of work that will be required at Front Street ultimately?
Ultimately, yes. Front Street, we have a lot of concerns with the structural section in the road now. We've encountered redwood trees that they used as base in the past, and so those are, those are failing. So yes.
That's going to affect the cost directly.
Yes, yes. In 2008, we completed the Northcrest-Wilson rehabilitation project, in which we put an overlay over the entire length of Northcrest within the city limits, as well as Wilson. Again, this was funded by STIP funding, as well as TDA, which is the Transportation Development Act, and that allowed us to complete the pedestrian improvements on this project. You can see there's a shot of Wilson with the new pedestrian improvements to the left there, as well as Northcrest to the right. In 2008, part of the pedestrian improvement for pedestrian transportation, we completed the Harbor Trail Project. This was completed by Hemmingson Construction, and for the contract amount of right around $935,000. Again, this project didn't have any additive change orders other than the ones we requested for additional scope of work. 2009, we completed the Ninth Street Rehabilitation and Pedestrian Improvement, and Councilwoman Westfall actually requested a summary of this project, so we'll go into a little bit more detail on this one. Ninth Street was a overlay project between the streets of H Street and L Street. It included basically about 472 tons of AC. Eighty-five of that were done in digouts, which is basically just an increased structural section, as the areas that we thought were, were failing or had some sort of structural deficiencies, so we actually went deeper in these areas. Twelve access ramps were completed, three, about 1,300 lineal feet of sidewalk, as well as about, actually 1,300 lineal feet of curb and gutter, as well as about 7,500 feet of sidewalk or driveway. This was completely funded by RSTP funds. The contractor was Tide Water Construction, and the final construction amount is within about $2,000 of the, of our funding amount. So really a nice project. Moving on to the projects that we expect to complete this summer. The 2009 project was a micro-surfacing project, which included micro-surfacing of approximately about 150 city blocks, as well as a rejuvenation seal on about 35, and then all of the striping. Part of this project was the prep for the project, and so that included a crack seal on the majority of the streets where they had actually opened up. So we went through, they actually started this last year, and, and cracked sealed about 20,000 lineal feet on our, on our streets to seal it up for the wintertime. Winter then hit, so we suspended the project over the winter. I would also like to thank Mike Wallant. He is the project superintendent from Valley Slurry. He is in attendance tonight. So after I complete the presentation, I'd like to invite him up, and he'll tell you a little bit more about- a little bit more about his company, as well as the anticipated construction schedule. Another project that, that we're going to take forward in the next item actually, is the Fifth Street project, which is an ARA project between A Street and Wendell. And then H Street is a pedestrian improvement between Front and 11th. We'll touch base on those in the next item. Project that we have funding for and we are trying our best to get it out this summer is, is a Front Street to A Street realignment. It's basically an S curve by the Hampton Inn. So, again, this is funded by local, by local grant, RSTP for 275,000. We anticipate this bidding hopefully in September, in which we'll, we'll do a hard push to try and get it built this summer. A project that is on the books and is slated for STIP funding, which is state funding, and as you know, as they know and we know, the state is in dire financial straits, so this funding has been suspended, but is the A Street Pebble Beach project. This is a pedestrian improvement project along Pebble Beach, and also a road project on A Street, basically between Seventh and Pacific. So, it'll be, it'll be quite the project when it goes. It's, we have 635,000 on the books, so as soon as that kicks loose, we'll be able to design that and hopefully get that out. So, to wrap up, these are a list of the projects we just talked about. If you total them up, over the last five years, we've completed right around $3 million worth of transportation-related projects, mostly funded through grants, almost entirely. One thing to keep in mind, and I'd also like to acknowledge, is we have a very small engineering staff at the city. We've done all of these projects in-house, both design, construction, inspection, as well as project closeout. So, I'd like to give Kevin Tutman, the city's engineering technician, recognition tonight, he's in attendance, as well as Jim Barnes, Public Works Director.
And yourself.
And, and myself. This is a map, and it's a little bit hard to see, but it's in white. Here's the city limits. What this map shows is basically a summary of all the, all the streets that we have worked on over the last five years, and this includes the micro-surfacing, as well as the projects that we anticipate kicking off in the next, in the next few months. So, as you can see, the streets in black here are the ones that we have actually done with A overlay, the streets in red are the micro-surfacing. If you look at these streets, we have done over 60% of the streets within the city limits over the last five years. So, I'd like to point out that while the majority of those projects were done with grant funding, RSTPs, STIP funds, it is important for the council to, to realize that streets take maintenance, and it takes projects like crack sealing and, and like micro-surfacing to keep these streets up, now that they're in good condition. So, although we're not asking for any, any general fund dollars to go towards street projects in this budget, there will be a time, and it is very important that we do, do the little things to keep these streets up.
Do you have a, does your department put together a projected maintenance fund for Azzi's? For instance, just take one street, let's say Ninth Street, and, and it was just, you know, redone. Do you have any kind of, like a projected maintenance budget that's kind of given to the city manager that says, hey, in five years or seven years, you know, you should probably plan to dedicate 100,000 or whatever to, for maintenance?
Not on a street-to-street basis, but we should just, as a general rule for the city, with the amount of streets we have, try to budget, you know, $50,000. And then, every street, depending on its structural section, is going to deteriorate differently. So, based upon that, then we'll make an evaluation for that year. We might try and group the money together to put out a bigger project, to bring, to bring contractors in. So, not directly, but, but it needs to be a goal to do that as a city as a whole.
Okay, thanks.
With that, unless there's any questions for myself, I'd like to invite Mike Wallant up from Valley Slurry to talk a little bit about our upcoming slurry project.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to come up and say hi and meet all you folks. We appreciate the project and looking forward to get started on it, get it done with the least inconvenience we can. A micro-surfacing, if you're not familiar with maintenance products, is a thin monolayer system which pre, pre, existing... Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
It's been a long day.
It protects existing surfaces, if they're in good shape. There's many maintenance products out there that you could do. You can do chip seals, cape seals, slurry seals, micro-surfacing. So, there's a variety of tools that Eric's got in his toolbox that we could use. The micro-surfacing is a, more of a chemical reaction that's probably more appropriate for the climate that you have up here than you do, say, down in the valley where you have temperatures in excess of 100 degrees daily. Micro-surfacing cures up, sets up with a chemical reaction by utilizing different emulsifiers and emulsions and, and so on and so forth. We are going to be coming in, Eric and I will be driving the project tomorrow, along with Kevin, and kind of get an idea of how we're going to approach the project in total. We did get some of the crack sealing done last year. The micro-surfacing is always an inconvenience to your, your public. We'll try to minimize that and with the least discontent with your citizens, because Eric will be receiving phone calls. There's no doubt about it. I'm here really to answer any questions you have on the product itself. I'm just looking at what you have done together with the city on your reconstructions. As Eric puts a maintenance program in place, it will greatly benefit the city's pocketbook as far as just being able to do a maintenance product rather than another reconstruct. Maintenance products are probably a quarter of the cost of a reconstruct. So, we, we're here to, to try to help you with anything we can. I, I do appreciate the increase in contract value, though. Was that appropriate? Was that the right number? Okay. Original contract was about 311,000. If Eric grabs some more dollars, it's for the benefit of some streets that are in good condition. There are some special areas that we're going to take a look at to see what kind of treatments we might find appropriate.
Eric did a really fantastic presentation to us previously where we approved this project already, so we have a lot of the background. Can you remind me what the lifetime of the micro-surfacing is?
You were, you were real close. Five to seven years minimum, seven to 10 years are more likely with a micro-surfacing.
Okay.
Slurry seals are about five to seven, micros are about seven to 10.
Okay, great. And project time?
Project time?
Time?
I'm pulling up a 10-day and plan on moving in as soon as we can. The rains look like they've diminished a little.
You're going to be done in 10 days? Is that what you just said?
No. I'm pulling 10-day weather reports to see what your weather's doing to us out here. It's been delayed and delayed. Eric and I are talking, we'll talk again tomorrow, but probably within the next couple weeks may seem to be the best time here before the fog starts coming in.
And so, once you start, approximately, how long will the project take?
Um, I've got another, about eight days of intruding on your city.
That's not bad.
We'll go pretty quick. If you look at the blocking on your map, we will be taking a few blocks at a time, but we'll always maintain access to residents' homes with a minimal amount of walking distances and those kinds of things, and detours that are available to us. So, those are, be things that we take into consideration when scheduling.
What's your time between your application and drivability?
Um, we would like, probably get about three hours before we open it up to full traffic. An hour is break time, which you could walk across it and start, but anytime you start getting power steering burns, people back out of driveways, crank the steering wheel. Want to give that a little more time so they don't tear the material.
That's great. I would just recommend that we do a press release, so that, you know, as you're going through the, the project, maybe alert certain communities that there'll be guys out there working on the roads and to be patient, because it's going to be a much more beautiful city when they're done.
Absolutely. Absolutely. They'll be proud of their streets.
Great. Any other questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yes, most definitely. We will coordinate with Mike, and once he puts the schedule together, we will put press releases out there and sort of let the community know where they're going to be. One other project that we're going to touch on with this micro-surfacing project, but it's only just a, a mere Band-Aid, is Front Street. And so, with Front Street included in this project is a rejuvenation seal, in which we're basically going to turn it black. And then, because of the striping prices that we received with this project...
We had that little extra funding.
Yeah, due to the, yeah, due to the quantities of it, we went ahead and pushed through. We need to restripe Front Street anyway. The cost of rejuvenation seal isn't that great, so we're going to turn it back and restripe Front Street with the rest of the, of the project that we're doing here.
Right. One of the reasons I want to be very careful with our RDA funds is because that was one of the options for Front Street that we discussed just recently.
And I believe we have decided on a date for the first meeting for Front Street to discuss different design options and things we want to do for the community. And that's going to be May 20th at 6 o'clock at the Crescent Fire Protection District. That will also be announced in the paper and I believe on the radio.
Great.
Okay, that concludes the, sort of the look back and the look ahead.
Eric, when are we going to do the resurfacing on Front Street, though?
That'll be the, just the rejuvenation seal.
The rejuvenation.
That'll be with this project.
Oh, okay.
So... 6 o'clock, 20th Fire Hall? 6 o'clock, May 20th, at the Fire Hall on Washington Street, Crescent Fire Protection.
So, it might be done before 4th of July?
Yes. Yes. You're going to do a little bit of maybe grinding and filling before that?
We, we directed him to.
We're going to, yes, we are going to try and do what we can. We're gonna, it, it needs it. Again, this is only going to be a Band-Aid, so, you know, the street will look black and it'll be striped very nice, but the bumps...
It'll look pretty, it just won't feel pretty when you drive down it. It'll look pretty for 4th of July.
I hear you. Yeah. It's, uh, it is what it is, so to speak, but... Speed, speed bumps. That's, that's right. It slows people down, traffic calming. Thank you.
All right. Is that it?
That, that's it as far as this item goes.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on the presentation? Eric, we're going to have some public comment.
I'm Shorter. Hello, I'm Tamara Leighton, the executive director of the Local Transportation Commission. And I understand, you know, my, the Transportation Commission is a forward-looking organization that is made up of the city council and county board of supervisors and public representative all together. And the, the Local Transportation Commission already has its eye on Front Street as an incoming priority project, so I wanted to report that, that in conjunction with the city staff's report that, that, you know, I, I don't even, honestly, I don't even think about the projects much once the funding is allocated and it's done, so I'm, you know, pleased and surprised to see, because I'm always looking forward at, you know, where the next dollar is to fund the next project. And I think that we have two projects that are potentially going to impact the city pretty substantially, and one of them is Front Street, and the second one is traffic calming gateway treatment planning that is on Highway 101, coming into the city and going out of the city in the sort of ShopSmart area, both areas of 101. And our planning documents are, are just being completed for that project right now, but we, you know, again, I have, you know, my, my eye on the future for Front Street as the executive director of the Local Transportation Commission, and am in fact intending to attend the California Transportation Plan Meeting in a couple weeks to, you know, attend the STIP hearing, but also sort of get a feel for what's in the incoming STIP years, because I think it's our most viable funding source for that project. It's going to be a project that the city would not be able to support on its own with, you know, any amount of funds that we know about right now. So, I think with identified funds, that's our most viable funding source. I would also, you know, like to encourage the city council, but also the city staff, before they spend $50,000 annually on their roadway maintenance, that they come back to the Local Transportation Commission and seek funding from transportation funding sources for those smaller projects. There are potentially ways that we can fund some of the smaller projects without spending general fund dollars on, on those projects. And I know that in, you know, in everybody's budgets, the general fund dollars are very scarce.
Great. Any questions? Thank you.
I'd like to offer a salute to Tamara with the LTICO and the helping with the funding for these various projects, and, and the city staff, and the contractors collectively. I mean, imagine $3 million investment in our city, you know, so it's a, it's a big deal.
It is a big deal, and transportation and, and has been working hand-in-hand with our city staff, so thank you. I know that you guys work very hard. Appreciate it. Okay, is there any other public comment on that item? If not, we're going to move on to item number 12. We have two contracts to, for consideration and award this evening funded with ARA money. And, uh, let's see, we first have the contract for Hem, with Hemmingson Construction for Fifth Street from Ada Wendell, and it's a rehab and pedestrian improvement project. And then, the second will be with Dan Co-Builders Northwest for the H Street project, which will be from Front Street to 11th Street. And the pedestrian, same thing, pedestrian access ramp improvement project. Mr. Weir?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, yes, these are our two projects that were brought before you guys about a month ago, and you guys authorized us to go out to bid. So, bids came back in a couple weeks ago. Just do a quick review of the projects. I've created one presentation for both projects, and then with, with recommendations for, for requests at the end. So, the first one is Fifth Street. It's basically, it's just a road overlay with pedestrian improvements along it, so it includes about six access ramps and then rehabilitation of the roadway with numerous digouts and whatnot in it. The, we have $108,000 worth of funding from the ARA funds. Bids were opened on the 21st of April. Two bids were received, one from Hemmingson Construction and one from Granite Construction. Hemmingson was the low bidder at 76,750. This leaves approximately about $30,000 in remaining funding. This funding, because it's federal funding and with the R, cannot be used to increase the scope of work on the project. However, it can be used for some construction management, as well as inspection. So, Hemmingson was the low bidder, and I'd also like to acknowledge that Dave Jaeger, the project manager with Hemmingson is here tonight. With some of those projects that you saw in the past, Dave has been the project manager on, on pretty much almost all of them, I believe. Dave's spent, they've spent some time with Granite during the time that Granite was doing a lot of our work, then when we switched to Hemmingson, now Hemmingson has received a lot of the work. So, give Dave a lot of credit for those projects going smoothly and, and being completed on time and within budget.
Can I, can I ask just real quickly, since he's here? Has the small business preference and 5% preference for local contractors been helpful during this process?
Not as far as the city projects go. It was not included in these ARA projects because it was federal funding. It's prohibited to include a local...
Oh, really?
...preference.
Okay.
Yes, so we left it out of those bid documents.
Okay.
Ninth. Yeah. And, and Ninth Street, if I remember right, bid just before that ordinance wasn't active.
Right, and I remember. Okay, thanks.
So, that is Fifth Street. Moving on to Eighth, I'll go ahead, or H Street, I'll go ahead and give the presentation on that as well. Just like you said, this is a pedestrian access ramp project, in which we're going to do approximately 34 access ramps with a complete rebuild, and then we're going to rehabilitate three of them. Basically, these ramps meet the slope requirements, they just need some of the, basically the yellow panels is what they need. And then, we're also going to construct about 1,500 square feet of sidewalk. This is a sidewalk that's adjacent to the ramps where possibly the sidewalk is a little bit out of spec, but what we'll do is we'll tie in the brand-new ramp in with the sidewalk. We had $150,000 worth of funding for this project. We received five bids on this one. Dan Co-Builders was the, was the low bidder. They're a contractor out of Eureka. Again, with the remaining funding, this will be used for construction management, inspection, materials testing, stuff like that. So, that in a nutshell is the, are the two projects. The bids came in below, which is, which is great, as far as I'm concerned, and it gives us a little bit of money for contingency. So, what we're asking you to do is authorize, authorize the city manager to go ahead and sign these contracts for both projects, as well as authorize the city manager to approve any change orders in the amount of $10,000 or less, not to exceed 50 for the whole project.
Which is our policy.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for Eric?
Yes. Eric, would the balance cover all of... Yes, uh, Eric, would, uh, the balance cover all of the, uh, testing, inspection, and construction administration?
I believe so, any of the outside that we're going to hire, because with the federal funding, it becomes a quality assurance program, is what they call it, in which you have to have a certified laboratory and certified testers do all your material testing. So yes, that's the anticipation.
Good.
Catherine, do you have anything?
Ms. Westfall?
Um, Eric, going back to the Ninth Street sidewalk road project, um, we also had the change orders, the amount of 10,000 or less with, um, not to exceed 50,000. Did we actually use any change orders, and did it go to 50,000?
There was one change order on Ninth, which we actually took to the council when the project bid, if I remember right, or shortly thereafter, possibly the next meeting, but it actually went to the council because it was a substantial amount. If I remember right, it was somewhere in the tune of about $58,000, still within our funding limits, and that increased the amount of sidewalk, we could do curb and gutter and whatnot, so that one went to the council. And then, other than that, the project pretty much went seamlessly.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Burns?
Nope, fine.
Great, thank you. Any public comment on these two projects? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and can I get a motion to approve, please?
I move that you authorize city manager signing agreement with Hemmingson Construction to complete the Fifth Street, uh, rehabilitation project as within the designated budget and keeping with city, uh, change orders in the amounts listed.
I'll second that.
Okay, can I get you to pull the vote, please?
Mayor, could I ask, I wasn't totally sure of the motion, but I think the change order authorization, instead of saying 50,000, should reflect up to the limit of available funds, since these are ARA-funded, unless you want to dip into...
Because there, we can't increase the scope of the project because they are ARA funds, so...
But, any change order would not, would not exceed the amount of the, uh, ARA funding.
Right.
I'll add that to my...
Can we, well, okay, so now I'm confused. I thought you said that the, because they're ARA-funded, that the scope of the project, we cannot increase the project's cost?
So we cannot increase the scope of work, so now that the bids have came back lower than what the funding amount is, we can't now go back and add another 200 lineal feet of sidewalk?
But if you find a big redwood in the bottom or something, you can increase...
Oh, I see.
Yes.
But the scope has not increased.
Correct.
Okay.
But I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the authorization for the city manager...
And I amended my motion not to exceed the, uh, ARA.
That doesn't...
Second it.
Alright, would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
And Mayor Shlong?
Yes, thank you, and can I get a motion for, uh, Front Street to 11th, H Street?
So moved.
That was easier, Charles. Second.
With the same stipulation.
The same stipulation.
Too easy, too easy.
Uh, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Mayor Shlong?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, speaking of change orders, we have one for our wastewater treatment plant project, um, this is item number 13, Mr. Burns.
I, uh, would say as I look at all the roadwork, I can remember coming to Crescent City six years ago, six and a half years ago, looking at all the streets, Eric and I were brand-new, and, uh, being, uh, a little horrified at, uh, the tasks ahead, and, uh, but now, pretty thankful for the crew I have, working on this, these projects, and, uh, pleased with the results that we have so far, and, uh, like Eric said, Tamara has been, uh, good to work with, and, uh, the community has been real good to work with also, the county and so on, so a lot's been accomplished and things have gone well. And, uh, Kevin has been very good, uh, putting the plans together, so things have gone very well. As far as this change order is concerned, there's four items, and I don't know whether you want me to go into each item, Kelly, but I can go through each of the items, or, but what we have is a change order amounting to some $57,000, and it is, uh, we have the, uh, upgrade of the operations building to add some heating and air conditioning, as well as finished painting and, uh, some dampers on some fire, uh, in the HVAC system, as well as some handrails.
Basically, what I took away from your summary is that we have a couple things that we have to do for safety reasons, um, to provide some railing, um, around some equipment that could harm employees should they get caught in it.
You don't want to get caught in the muffin monster?
No, I don't think so. The muffin monster, I, that's an interesting name for...
It is, isn't it? It grinds all the goop that comes into the plant, yeah. Who comes up with these names?
I'd like to know, um, but obviously that sounds like a very much needed item, and then the HVAC, uh, system, I was, the only question I had was, you said you're going back to the engineers for relief on that item, can you tell us why?
The, this was just the dampers on the 1,200, $1,300 item, and we think it's just an engineering, uh, something that they probably should have had in the design, so...
Okay, just gonna go back and have a discussion with them?
Yeah. It'll be in the big package discussion.
And then I, I really wanted to hear what your thoughts were on having public meetings or workshops in the wastewater treatment plant, old lab building.
Well, it's gonna be a, uh, you know how we go to the firehouse now to have our budget hearings, and it's an old, um, building that doesn't have a very good heating, air conditioning, lighting system, the, if you have the, uh, heat on, it's, it's loud blowers, you don't have, uh, if you wanted to, in the city now, if you wanted to have a training session, you don't have good internet training sessions where you could have inner base with a trainer from out of town that wasn't in the building with you, where this new building would have all the new abilities that you can have, with electronic training, with, uh, good heating and air conditioning system, lighting systems, uh, good restrooms, it's a modern building. And so, since we had the room there, all we had to do was put in the tenant improvements to, uh, make it a functioning space, and so that's what we're doing, we put in the, uh, heating and air conditioning system and painted it.
Sorry. Okay, any questions from the council?
Pardon?
I, I have a couple comments, um, I, uh, thought this was important, so I, I called Mr. Barnes and asked him if, uh, some questions, and then, uh, we proposed to meet over at the facility and walk through it and to physically see the space. Uh, this will be the, probably the best public meeting room in the city and the county, um, and it's, uh, at very low cost, from a cost per square, square foot standpoint, because it's basically, uh, tenant improvements or the interior improvements of, uh, otherwise kind of building core and shell.
How big is that room, Mr. Slert?
It's nearly 1,000 square feet, so it'd probably handle 50, 60 people nicely, um, and I, actually, I think it's, uh, an amazing asset to the community because, uh, you actually go to the wastewater treatment facility and see it at work, and, uh, the money that's been invested, it's a showpiece, and I think it'll be very productive in the community.
Alright.
Um, I'd like to just say that I passed this memo by, um, Frank Dickey of Dickey Construction, who's done many, uh, public projects in the past, and...
I'm sorry, what proposal?
This memo on the, uh, change order number thirteen.
Okay, and who is your friend?
Frank Dickey Construction.
And where is he located?
Here.
Okay.
Um, I asked him if he thought these, there is justification for this change order, and he said, "No, this is not a recreational hall, they should have left the HVAC in the building, if they did not, did they just take it over the other one?", and who wants to have a business meeting at a sewer plant anyways?
I, I would offer, go see the space, and you'd probably be the first person I want to have a meeting there. Um, and, and, uh, the issue of the HVAC, uh, when it becomes, or goes from a storage kind of space or utilitarian space, you don't have to have a conditioned space, once it becomes a, an assembly room, then code requires that you have to have a certain air exchange on an hourly basis, so that requires that facility.
Thank you for that. It's good to have knowledge. Any other questions for Jim? Okay, I'll open this up to public comment. Is there any? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council.
Uh, I would move to approve, uh, change order number 13, uh, for the total amount of $57,028.48, uh, for items, uh, I think they're referred to as Proposal 85, 93, 98, and Proposal 100, uh, hoping that Mr. Barnes is successful in getting the, uh, fire damper reimbursement of $1,297.
Second.
Okay, could you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray, I'm sorry. Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
And Mayor Shlong?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Moving on to item 14, considering a three-year extension to the MOU with the TRI Agency. Uh, previously, the city has had a two-year MOU with TRI Agency, which is, uh, a JPA between the city, county, and harbor to move economic development forward in our community, and, uh, we have, uh, that MOU, current MOU is expiring, good night, Mr. Gibson. If you all want to know why we're doting on Mr. Gibson, it's because he was very ill and we almost lost him, so, and he was at every city council meeting and always, uh, provided input and sat on the sewer ad hoc committee meeting, and has just been a great, um, attribute to our, our area, and so we're happy he's with us tonight. Um, anyway, so the current MOU with TRI Agency is due to expire at the end of this fiscal year, uh, we have recently, um, about a year or so ago, um, had a new executive director hired, and he would like to know if he's going to continue to be our economic developer past June of this year, so he has asked our city manager to put together an MOU for us to consider. Um, I think as a TRI Agency board member, um, I've personally think that I've made it very clear, um, that, uh, should our general fund be impacted, um, by the sewer initiative, um, that we can't, we, we may not be able to hold true to a three-year, uh, commitment, however, um, we can start, uh, by considering it this evening. So that's really the background, and, uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Butler to add anything.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, yes, you have before you this evening a request that came to us from Mr. Renfro and the TRI Agency Board, this would, uh, basically commit the city to providing funding for the next three fiscal years in the amount of $30,000, which is the current amount, uh, we have always funded that with general fund dollars, and that would be the proposal, should the, uh, council decide to give that direction tonight. You have the 2008 agreement in front of you, which did have some performance measures and some specific, a specific scope of work included with it, that was approved by a previous council. Right now, the county provides $57,500 annually, the city is at $30,000, and the Harbor District is at $5,000. The county, uh, my understanding is, has made a three-year commitment to continue at that $57,500 level. So, Mr. Renfro, the executive director, is here this evening, if you have any questions, we're just basically coming before you again with, uh, budget workshop coming up next Monday, we wanted to get some council direction on whether to plan for the continuation of this funding, and we're asking you to review that proposed three-year extension, uh, would provide, uh, continue to provide economic development services through TRI Agency, and provide us with direction, uh, as far as whether you want us to continue that funding and the appropriate level of that funding, again, the proposal is that we would, the proposal from, uh, TRI Agency is that we would continue at 30,000 per year. That concludes my staff report, and, Mr., like I say, Mr. Renfro is here if you have any questions, and I'll be glad to take any that you have as well.
Okay, council, do you have any questions for Mr. Butler first? Ms. Westfall?
No.
Mr. Burns?
The only thing I'd like to see is if, if, if the November election turns out negatively that we need to revisit this.
Yeah, and I, and I believe that I asked that the MOU, or the original MOU, um, I had this clarified, um, gives us an out, like a...
Champion.
Yeah. I'm not sure the days, 60 days or 30 days, or...
That's fine, but I, I, I think TRI Agency needs to continue.
Yeah. Um, I know that Mr. Miles made a, uh, comment earlier about a typo, so if you could just make sure that any typos are corrected, that would be appreciated. Any questions for Mr. Renfro this evening?
Yes.
And it, all, all comments or questions are related to this MOU?
Right, uh, on the MOU that was signed in '08, I noticed the contractor should provide the following service, services, and going down to number D, facilitate business recruitment, expansion, and retention efforts, do you have a, a number, do you have an outline, or, can you tell us how that's going so far?
Just, uh, two weeks ago, the board, my board, the TRI Agency Board of Directors, approved the 2010, 2011, um, annual work plan that includes developing a business retention and expansion plan. Currently, we do not have a written business, um, retention and expansion plan in the community.
Okay, and then number E, promote and administer micro enterprise loan fund, um, how many, um, micro enterprise loans have been awarded so far?
Um, to date, we've awarded five micro enterprise loan funds, uh, three of those loans created new businesses, uh, it's created three brand-new positions, two of the loans were to existing companies that helped retain five employees.
Okay, and then going down to G, identified as, um, high-growth expanding industries, expected to create or retain 100 new jobs within a three-year timeframe, how are you do, doing on that?
Uh, prior to my arrival here, there was a study done of industry cluster groups that looked at different industry sectors such as agriculture, timber, extractive mineral mining, um, service industries, hospitality, that sort of thing, and it's sort of focused on which industries in our community we see expanding, which ones we see contracting. To date, and it was mentioned earlier this evening, the biggest expansion that we see currently is in tourism. Um, we are working with the Harbor District and the city to improve and expand the seafood processing facilities, uh, at the Harbor District that would bring in new jobs in the community, and we're working on that.
Uh, like Albert Seafood, have you, um, figured out how many more jobs that would potentially create?
There are estimates between, estimates between 30 and 45 new, those are FTEs, so they're full-time equivalents, so it actually may be more employees... full-time equivalents, so actually maybe more employees, some working part-time.
Okay, and what industries are contracting?
Well, as we know, the timber industry has gone through a serious contraction as a result of the building industry slowing down. They're not buying wood, so our timber industry in the county has, is the primary industry that's contracted.
Do you know how many jobs we've lost?
I don't know that.
Well, thirty years ago, we had fifty-two mills, and today we have one.
And even that mill has gone through some very serious trimming to stay afloat.
Okay, thank you.
And we do provide an annual report to the city every year that kind of covers these topics.
Yeah, I believe she has that report, and if you don't, you can absolutely get another copy.
Any other questions?
Mr. Renfro, aren't there also a couple pending, additional pending, micro enterprise loans?
Yes, we have two that we're working with the applicants to get all their paperwork squared away, and once we issue those two loans, we will have committed all the funds that we have available at the current time.
And then we're going, you're going for additional funds for next year?
That is correct.
In the micro enterprise loan program.
These are through the county's CDVG, Community Development Block Program. The notice of funding availability, we expect in late June, and then the actual issuance of the new funds would be in September.
I would like to just summarize that Tri-Agency came into fruition in nineteen...
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. And it was created by James Hooper, a local attorney who is no longer with us, but very well-respected, and he wanted the best for our community to move forward. It started with trying to help the harbor, and then, so this JPA was created to move economic development forward, to be an engine, because we can all have our own economic development corners, but if we're not all working together, we're not going to get very far. The most recent vision of the Tri-Agency is what everybody in our community leadership circle knows as has199.com. It's to improve the harbor, which we've made tremendous strides on. We're not there yet, but hopefully they're going to start construction next year. It's the airport. The airport authority is working diligently to build a new airport terminal. It's sewer treatment upgrade and repairing our sewer treatment plant. That was a huge priority to this community. It's Highway 199 and 197, fixing our highways so that we can provide trucking and goods to our community. It's broadband, which is internet broadband service, so that we can have the facilities to do business from right here. We could have people that run their own business that need the amount of broadband that was not here previously. They can create their businesses here. We can do teleconferencing. We can do the medical teleconferencing that I know is already starting to happen at Sutter Coast Hospital. Those major areas are the major pieces of infrastructure that will move this community forward, not backwards, but forward. It's our job as leaders to make that happen, and then to maintain it and make sure that we are doing good things for our kids and our grandkids. More recently, the Tri-Agency has directed Mr. Renfro to look at not just recruiting businesses to our area to provide jobs, but to retain the businesses that we have here now, and to make sure that we are keeping the employees that we have employed, employed. And so that's why he's kind of refocusing. He's went out and got these micro enterprise loan funds, which is a brand-new program to Tri-Agency in this last year, and it's really started to help some of our local businesses and created three new businesses. So, he's on the right track. There's much work to do, much more jobs needed, and much more sustainability needed for our future, but I think it's a very important piece of what Crescent City does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Renfro? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I might, I have some concerns about the council's expression that, under certain circumstances, it might be necessary to cancel the agreement, the three-year commitment. The background contract that's being amended does make reference to a cancellation provision. It simply states the agreement will continue until canceled by either party, doesn't give any formalities as to how the cancellation would occur. I think that it would be sufficient if the council just expressed on the record tonight that, under certain circumstances, the city may have to cancel the agreement, if that's your belief.
I know that you signed this original contract, so can you please point out where the exit information is?
Under effective date, looking at the original contract, the effective date reads, "The MOU will become effective on the date signed by both parties and will continue until canceled by either party or at the expiration of two years on June 30, 2010." That is, it doesn't say, you know, canceled on 30 days' notice, or it doesn't express any formality as to how the cancellation would take place.
Yeah, just, but it does continue to say, "Any of the parties may, in writing, terminate this MOU in whole or in part at any time."
Oh, thank you, yeah, that solves the problem. I was looking at, I was just looking up above.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Did I take public comment? Can I have public comment, please? Sir?
My name's Henry Cole, and I live in the county. What broadband are you talking about?
What broadband am I talking about, internet service?
Yeah, where?
No, that's what...
Where can you get it?
That's what the mission is, is to actually bring broadband here to make it redundant.
Oh, I thought you said that, the way that you were talking, I thought it was available, and I thought, wow, where did this come from? I just thought I maybe missed something or something.
We have made significant strides. What charter has moved in and provided with fiber optics is...
Charter is crap. I mean, it's no good. And it's like this phone service in here. It's lousy. Why you accept it, you know, I don't understand that. It's just terrible service. I mean, what we get from Verizon, you know, I recommended to Councilmember Finnegan...
Supervisor Finnegan?
Supervisor Finnegan, that he knows Bigelow. Bigelow runs the Ponderosa Telephone Company. It's one of the most modern phone companies in California, and I have them for service. They're all 100% fiber optic, and they buy up small telephone companies. And I've recommended that they see about, maybe getting them to buy Verizon service, because Verizon's not spending any money here. And another thing you should look at is, I had a small business here, and I got stuck with propane bills up the yingang. You need to look at bringing in natural gas. They've tried to bring CNG into, up there in Coos Bay. They've tried to bring in Humboldt Bay. They don't need a harbor to bring it in. The tankers can bring into just a fill facility. You know, with all this public lands around here, if we could stick some of these big tanks out in the middle of nowhere, nobody'd see them, and we could have CNG here. And it'd bring down cost factors for heating people's houses, you know, very, be a very good thing for around here. So see what you can do.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Hoon?
Tim Hoon, I was happy to finally see this on the agenda here. I didn't know that Tri-Agency Economic Development had been around since seventy-six, is that what you said?
I think it was in the sixties, but...
Anyway, that's wonderful, because, you know, economic development doesn't just happen, business retention and expansion doesn't just happen. You need a knowledgeable professional, someone like Bill Renfro. I've worked with Bill past year or so, since he's been here, and he's been wonderful to work with. He has years of private sector experience. He speaks the language of private business. He's creative. He provides that same type of expertise that the city, the reason why you hire an attorney, or why you hire a city manager, or why you hire an accountant. It's specialized knowledge that you can't just, you know, wing in. That's why we have engineers and, you know, and economic development professional like Bill for, I think, the contract, or the MOU, whatever you're calling it, $30,000 a year for three years, that's a bargain. So I encourage you to sign that contract and move ahead, as you well said.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Madam Mayor, the Tri-Agency is a lot like the Visitor Bureau, in that it's a city partnership, and this also is about commitment, and I'm in support of making a commitment to the Tri-Agency. I think it's helping collectively our community and region move forward in a positive way.
I immediately adopt the memorandum under Senate Queen Tri-Agency, the Crescent City, City of Crescent City, as presented.
With that caveat...
It's in here already.
I believe it's in the contract already. We just needed to make it publicly known that that's a very real scenario.
I'll second it.
Okay, please pull the vote.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Slart?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Shlong?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to number fifteen, received certification by the county clerk and city clerk of the results of the petition filed pertaining to the use of fluoride. So, let's see. History, Catherine Kelly, last year, I believe it was, decided that removing the fluoride out of our city water was a priority. She's moved forward and collected signatures, and we are here and required by law to certify the results from the county clerk and put it on the November ballot, and so you will have the right to vote on whether or not you would like fluoride in your city water. My only question tonight is a legal question, Mr. Black.
Yes.
For instance, when Ms. Westfall serves me with an intent to recall me, I have the opportunity to respond, so that what she has, what she claims is on the ballot, but my response to her claim is also on the ballot, correct?
No.
So...
Your response to her claim is only on the petition that was circulated. It doesn't go on the ballot. There will be an opportunity for pro and con arguments and rebuttals to those arguments to be in the voter pamphlet, but on the ballot itself, the only thing you're going to see...
So it goes in the voter pamphlet?
In the voter pamphlet, not the, not the 200-word statement that you submitted, but there will be an opportunity for you, if you're subject to recall, and the candidates to replace you can put candidate statements in the pamphlet.
Okay, so the reason I brought that up is in relationship to the fluoride, will there be the same opportunity for there to be Ms. Kelly's reasoning for removing fluoride, and then maybe the dentists and the medical, and the parents or whomever that group is that wants to keep the fluoride?
Yes, whoever steps forward. It could be Ms. Kelly. It could be somebody else with the pro argument. It could be dentists, or it could be somebody else with the con argument.
Okay, and how does that process work? When are they allowed to do that?
The county clerk, as she packages up the election materials and gets ready to create the election pamphlet, the sample ballot and the election pamphlet that goes with it, will put out a public notice that she is, you know, that there is this opportunity to present pro and con arguments. The pro and con arguments will be submitted. There's an opportunity for people to actually rebut the pro argument, rebut the con argument, and then she puts them into the ballot pamphlet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions from the council? Questions over here? No? Okay, I will open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Renfro?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Bill Renfro. I'm actually speaking as a consumer of the water who lives in the county. My reading of the measure is that it's overly broad, in that it prohibits the city's introduction of, Mr. Black can help me here, I believe, contaminants or other chemicals or something like that into the water system.
Yeah, any, it prohibits the delivery through city water of any product, substance, device, element, medicine, preventive agent, including fluoride, with the intent or purpose of affecting the physical or mental functions of any water consumer. It's broad.
Yes, in my opinion, it would probably preclude chlorine, which is, as we all know, very toxic. It's actually added to the water to kill pathogenic organisms, and that's that sort of Clorox-y smell you smell when it comes out of your tap. So perhaps this could be, if it's just fluoride that Councilwoman Westfall is opposing...
It's actually Catherine Kelly.
Sorry, Catherine Kelly is opposing.
She's a private citizen.
That perhaps it'd be narrowed down to just that specific chemical, because I believe that EPA looks at chlorine as a toxic substance. It's prohibited from discharge into fresh water. The city wastewater treatment plant has to dechlorinate the wastewater, once it's treated with chlorine, before it can be allowed to be put in the ocean.
Right.
So that's my comment.
Mr. Howard?
I was hoping that this particular measure wouldn't make it on the ballot. It concerns me greatly that it's actually going to be something that we actually look to remove from our water supply, given that, under the California Endowment Building Health and Communities Initiative, we're really looking to impact that true at-risk population we have within our city limits and outside our city limits that have massive amounts of tooth decay. I'm hoping, over the next couple of months, that we begin an educational program to show the importance of fluoride, and our local dentists speak out in support of continuing this process. I, for one, am glad to be reaching 40 this year without a cavity in my mouth, and my wife, the same, at age 38, both growing up on municipal water supplies with fluoride. I can't say the same for my eight-year-old child, who did not live in the city limits and was on a well-water system at age seven, had six cavities, and spoke to our dentist about it, what caused the situation, and it was a lack of fluoride. I wish I would have known that sooner. We could have been supplementing that in his diet. Very good hygiene, but fell apart. So, I'm concerned. I want to make sure that we make proper decisions within the community, because this does impact all of us, and I really hope that in the future, when we do begin the annexation discussions, that it does broaden our voting population quite extensively, so we could have a larger voting populace that could make more effective, educated decisions on such an important decision for our youth in this community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Deborah Cole, County, I have the opposite opinion.
Deborah Cole, County, I have the opposite opinion. There are many studies that have been done, there are whole communities that have people that don't have any cavities at all, the difference is, they don't have fluoride in the water. I'm also one of those people that have very few cavities. I had teeth break off, I've had a tooth break off that I did get a cavity in it, and it's because I didn't have the fluoride growing up. We don't use fluoride in our toothpaste. We don't care to have fluoride in our water, thank you very much, and I happen to like the way that the, the thing reads without having the fluoride in the water. I don't particularly care for that, I like my well-water without having to have the other chemicals added. I happen to be allergic to those chemicals. So there are some of us that like the way that we don't have the extra chemicals added to the water. We don't happen to think that having the extra poisons in the water happens to be helpful to us or our children. So I, I think that having that informed decision of not having the chloride is a good thing. So I think it's a good thing that it's on the ballot. I don't happen to think that, that just because some of us don't want to have poisons in our body, I don't think that that's a bad decision on our behalf. So I think there's two sides to every story, and I think having it on the ballot is a good decision. And I think that just because we want to have something like that on the ballot doesn't mean that we're bad people. Thank you.
Well, I certainly don't think you're a bad person. I have a, can I ask you a question, just quickly? Just because I didn't, I didn't, you know, these ballots are hard to understand, so if, if it says that the initiative doesn't allow any kind of agent to be added to the water that comes out of the river, how would you recommend, what, what would you do to recommend that we have safe drinking water?
There's different ways to kill the bacteria. There's a reason you have to, to dechlorinate the water before it goes into the ocean, okay?
What, what ways, what, what ways are there? I, I'm just, I don't know.
Ozone lights will work.
Ozone lights?
Yeah.
Oh.
Quite well.
What, I'm just cur, I was just curious.
I think he meant UV light.
Ozon will work on UV light, will work, but they're very expensive, so you probably could up your water bill by substantial...
Talking about a lot of water to...
There are, but what the state requires is that you have a testable residual, which chlorine gives us at a, you know, a very inexpensive means, because we do pass on average about two million gallons a day through the city water system. UV lights do not give you a residual at all. They are an effective way of killing the, the bacteria and the organisms that are in, within the water, but there is no residual, so you can't guarantee that those organisms are killed. And as a city water system, it's mandated by law that we have a residual in our water.
Okay, thanks. Sir, we, we can't go back and forth.
Well, I have a question. The reason we use two million gallons is because it, I've understood that our pipes are so bad that they need to be replaced in the streets, is that true?
One more and then we're done.
Actually, that's, that's not the case. We have a very reliable system. We have a, we hire a leak company, took him in occasionally every couple of years, and they don't find very many leaks at all. In fact, our unmetered water is, is very minimal, so our water system is, is in very good shape. The older pipes that we have in our system, they're in good shape as well, we've dug them up, the cast iron is almost in pristine condition, even after fifty years, so...
Great, thank you. Is there any other public comment on the initiative? Okay, seeing then, we'll bring it back to the council to certify.
Well, I'm just, so the, the title would, it would, the initiative would read exactly like it has right here under this title?
Well, unfortunately, the initiative, there's no copy of the initiative itself in the agenda. So all you have access to is the statement of reasoning by the circulators and my summary of what they put together. So that's all I can tell you, is that my summary, I'm pretty sure was accurate, and the title that I gave it is focused on the operative language of the initiative itself.
Yeah, so her initiative is not what she published with your title?
I don't see it there.
Well, I don't see how we can approve it if it's not the same thing that was, the petition that was circulated.
Well, we're gonna have to bring that back to you. Because I don't see it here, I don't see the initiative language itself.
This is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, that's their notice of intention, but that's not the...
So this wording is not...
It's not the initiative language itself.
Well, aren't we supposed to, sorry, let me get to my question. Aren't we supposed to certify this within so many days?
That would be my only question, is are we, if we put it off for two weeks, is that gonna be putting us in danger of the certifying within a certain number of days that we receive the notification?
How we can certify something, whatever, the initiative to, this petition that she circulated is clearly not the same language that she has, that Mr. Black has presented to us. So if they're two different things, I don't see how we can certify it.
Is that because somebody forgot to put it in? Our binders?
No, I put this report together, I put this whole package together, and this is what I included. So I thought that the analysis and the, the information that was provided was gonna be adequate, so I'll take responsibility for that.
But regardless, if that's not the same thing that the petition that they circulated...
I think what Catherine's saying is, what we have is her notice of intent to circulate a petition with wording.
Right.
And so her question is, is her initiative substantially different than what we've been provided with and what was published to the community?
Well, let me just say, there's a, there's a, there is language that constitutes the ordinance that the voters will be expected to vote on in November.
That's whether to put...
And I don't see that language in the, in the agenda, in the materials in front of And I, I honestly don't know, I don't know exactly what our deadline is, because I didn't expect there was gonna be a deadline problem, so I didn't really focus on it.
But we could vote Monday night at our budget meeting on this.
Yeah, that might be the best. That's an excellent suggestion, is to, is to schedule it as a special item for the Monday night budget session, and that way you'd have everything in front of you.
Well, I would like to know, before we make that decision, if we are going to be going against what we're required to do.
By law.
By law, which is to certify this petition to be on the ballot within so many days of the time it was turned into the city.
Sure. If you want, I'll go get my laptop and just look it up.
Okay, but I'm just saying, how can you certify something that is so off from what was circulating in the petition? If we don't, if we don't certify it because it's so off from what was circulated, then it would happen.
I think what, I think what she's saying is, what was circulated to the community for signatures, I'm assuming is what is on her notice of intent to circulate, and is that different than the initiative that we would have to pass in November?
Right, would we be held at fault for not certifying it if it's that off?
Well, I can't speak to the, what they published, but I can tell you that when they submitted the notice of intent, attached to the notice of intent was a copy of an ordinance, and it was the ordinance that they were, that they're seeking to put on the ballot. So what we need to have in front of us is the ordinance itself, so that you can look at it and act on it. In the interim period, if we do delay until Monday, we can get a copy of the petition itself that was circulated, which, by the way, they were not required to, and the city did not approve their petition. They, they took the information and they went and got signatures, because that's the process. So the city did not approve their petition, it was circulated and then submitted with signatures. We don't have that in front of us either, that's not required to be in front of us, but the, the, the language of the ordinance that's expected to be voted upon really should be.
What legal recourse do we have to change that language?
None.
So, so...
Even if it's different than the petition that she circulated?
Well, it can't be different than the petition that she circulated.
So it doesn't make any difference if it's...
Because the petition that she circulated is what determines what's gonna be on the ballot.
Right, so it doesn't make any difference to me, whatever they've written down in their petition is what's written down. We either approve it tonight, we adopt it, we submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters?
I guess, the one thing that concerns me is, when I look at what they published, it doesn't have a copy of the ordinance language, and I think that's, I think that's how we ended up in this position, because I think Rod reasonably thought that it was part of this publication. And I don't know what the effect of that is. But I think what needs to happen right now is, we need to figure out what's our deadline to do this certification, if there is one.
There is.
I know that the, I know that the county clerk needs to know by June twenty-fourth what's gonna be on the ballot and what isn't. Beyond that, I'm gonna have to...
I would ask that you please go find out for us. Thank you. We're gonna table this for a few minutes, so that we can make sure that we are doing the right thing, and move on to item sixteen. Is this gonna be a lengthy discussion?
I hope not.
Okay.
It's not simple.
Okay, well, so, this is in relationship to Gatsby forty-five, right? Okay, so, Mr. McDonald, our finance director is here this evening to ask us to adopt a post-employment benefit plan trust and trust administrator. So basically, what that means is, when people work for a public municipality and they receive benefits like healthcare, da-da-da-da-da. So some of those people have MOUs through their unions to receive post-employment retirement benefits. If you work for cities, counties, states, federal governments, you, many of those municipalities receive post-employment retirement benefits. What happened recently is that Gatsby, which is a standing governmental agency, governmental accounting standard board, has required those agencies to actually start accounting for that, that money. So let's say, you know, Mr. McDonald is an employee that rece, will, will receive retirement benefits when he retires. Well, instead of us just putting it on our books as a liability for whenever he retires, we actually have to start setting that money aside, so that we have it, so that we're not in the same situation that California's in right now, and they don't have the money to pay the retirees. And so we are gonna start setting that money aside, which we've already agreed to do. Now we need to decide who we're going to invest that money with to take care of it until that person retires. Is that the layman's terms? Okay, good. Because it's really confusing. And so tonight, you are here to provide us with some options. Okay, come on up.
Okay, that was a very good description. The only thing I might add to, add clarity to that, is it's not the retirement benefit itself, that's a separate pension that we contribute to. This, other agencies may have other post-retirement benefits besides pensions, ours is only health insurance. When you retire after so many years working with the city, the city is obligated to pay a certain portion based on the MOUs and what's negotiated towards your future benefits. And it's usually, I think, anywhere from two-hundred to three-hundred dollars per month out of your total retirement benefit package of health insurance only.
And that applies not to us as elected officials, but to employees with MOUs that contain that provision?
Yeah, I think council members, I don't know how many years, but they have to be on so long and be getting that health insurance benefit, and then they can continue.
No, they cannot.
Currently, we have...
That, that stopped.
We have about three or four currently.
No, there was actually a law passed several years ago.
Yeah, they're, they were getting the full amount, a resolution that we just passed three months ago reduced that amount, there's, they were getting their full benefit paid, and that exceeded the amount, and they couldn't exceed any amount for regular employees.
No, two different things. There was a law passed that said that the elected officials could not get post-retirement benefits unless they served so many years prior to that date. So there are council members from previous past histories that are receiving those retirement benefits, but not since that law was passed.
Yeah, I'm not sure about current council, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if there's any type, I know in the past, they had to serve a certain amount of time, and they're getting a couple hundred dollars a month towards that.
Right.
But this is mainly to handle, and the part that I understand is, is for the employees. If the employee is currently getting health insurance, and then that employee retires, we will contribute a certain set amount, and that's based on their bargaining unit's negotiated amount. They have to be on the, and what it is, is it's really a requirement, we have our health insurance through CalPERS. When we signed up for that health insurance with them, they required us to have and provide that as an option for retirees to get that benefit, and so that's been negotiated at a certain amount. It's not set for everybody.
Right.
Right now, we have, we've been just doing what they call pay-as-you-go. It's about seventy thousand a year right now, and so as those monthly bills come in, we've just been paying it. As Gatsby forty-five, like you were talking about, we have to now recognize that future cost of, of employees that are currently working now and are not receiving it in the future. So they have actuariales, kind of like the life insurance actuariales, that estimate of the current employees, we have, say, seventy, eighty employees, how many of those are gonna get that future, future benefit, and how much do we need to contribute now to be able to have those funds available when they retire?
Okay, so you are recommending...
Well, there's two choices that I've found out there. One was CalPERS is, they have a, a post-entire, a post-retirement benefit trust also, and then the other one is PARS, which is Public Agency Retirement System. PARS is a nationwide nonprofit group, whereas PERS is just California. The main difference between the two that I've been able to find out is, CalPERS has, once you sign up for their trust, I believe it's a three-year commitment, that if you wanna cancel from their trust and start your own private trust or go with another agency, you have to give them, I think it was two or three years of advance notice. This PARS group, I think, has a ninety-day cancellation. So for some, for some reason, we wanna stop doing this and move it to another trust because something comes available, this has only been in effect for a few years, so there's not a lot of choices out there. And this one gives us that choice. It also gives us different investment vehicles that we can choose for how we want those future benefits to accrue, whether we want something real conservative or something mildly aggressive. And that's probably the complex issue for this.
Ken, could I clarify one point?
Sure.
And is that, that those retirement health benefits would be paid to age sixty-five or whenever someone went on Medicare?
I think, this is a health insurance question, but I think it, it only pays until sixty-five, and then when Medicare kicks in, I don't believe we contribute anymore towards that. So our, our retirement system is normal at sixty-five, so I believe it would cover that ten-year period. And then after that, I think they have to get a Medicare supplemental health insurance policy. But that one's going a little bit beyond my understanding of the health.
Just for the record and for public knowledge, we, we know CalPERS has been, you know, in business for quite a while, and has done pretty well and been pretty stable, not so much recently, but that's just the recession. But tell me a little more about PARS and how long they have been in existence and their financial performa?
PARS has been around for, I believe, twenty-five years?
At least twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, and they were a supplemental system that has gone out nationwide and set up a different pension... a different pension system. And they were one of the first ones to start up this type of funding, and I think it was because Montebello or a city in, or a school district in Southern California wanted to start funding some of these long before Gatsby took, took up this issue. I think they were real progressive from an accounting perspective and wanted to pre-fund these, and so they looked at setting these up. And that's why I think PARS is in a position where they got the letter ruling from the IRS that, that that trust can collect money and make income on it and not have to pay tax on the income, the trust itself. And so I think they had this in place quicker and that's why they were able to do this. They're also more responsive. PERS was supposed to have a conference on explaining the system in Eureka, I think it was two months ago. I got out there and they canceled the, the date. So, they haven't been real responsive in communicating with us. I wanted to try and get this in place before June 30th because if we don't have it in place, what we have to disclose on our financial statements is the unfunded liability, which is basically the difference between the amount we pay and the amount that we should be funding.
Which is not what we wanted to do.
Right.
Right, we wanted to fund it. Okay. All right, any questions, Mr. Slert? Catherine?
I studied this while I was in my dentist's office. No, I, I think you explained it pretty well, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Your recommendation is PARS then because of the flexibility and the length of time it takes to-
Yeah, because they've been real responsive, I have called some other cities that did it, and the only negative I could find from them was another friend of mine that's a finance director in another city said that she wasn't comfortable with it because she didn't want to stick her neck out on the line and make a recommendation for investments. But the way I look at it is if we can cancel these investments at any mo-, moment and even cancel the trust with a 90-day notice, we pretty much have good responsiveness. And I'll be getting monthly reports that I can give to the council that shows that investment performance and we can see what it's doing.
So, who chooses and manages the?
The trust is the administrator of the, of the funds accumulated from everybody. And then they appoint a trust investment advisor, which is Union Bank. They're also the, the, we use Union Bank for some of our bonds, and so they, we, we do have a working relationship with them. But they have an investment advisor that's a CFA, which is a chartered financial analyst, and he basically manages those funds and looks at it. They have an index fund, which is one type where they use industry indexes to pick where they, they invest their funds. And then they have a high mark fund, which is a mutual fund that basically they pick those amounts out and allocate where those equities and everything go. But that's the second part to this.
Yeah, I know. But with CalPERS, they just have a system already in place where they manage all the money?
No choice. And I went to a recent seminar with some people that were current investment advisors and they brought to light, and if it's out there to research and find, CalPERS has a benchmark index for their financial performance. And because they're, if not the largest, the second largest in the nation, they're falling behind the benchmark. And when they're that large, they kind of lead the pack. So it's really telling us that their investment advice has been real poor and that's why they've performed poorly in the last couple of years. Even though everybody has, there are some investment advisors out there that haven't performed poorly. And this is where, you know, my friend was telling me she didn't want to get her neck out on the line with it, but I think as long as I'm here, we're here and we're monitoring this, I think it's something that, I think we have much more flexibility and ability to watch our money grow and as that money grows-
As long as, yeah, as long as, I was just making clear, making sure we have a financial advisor that's going to be taking care of the fund.
Yeah, and he's there, so if, if we need to call him, we can call him, you know, and get direct one-on-one response. And I, I think it does give us a pretty good idea. We're, we're going to have to really watch this closely because it is really new, so we won't know what it's like. But with all the details and headaches of creating a trust and running a trust itself, I don't think it's ever anything that we're going to want to do. But as this goes over in time, other joint powers agencies, other agencies might create this up and give us an opportunity to look and see how we've been performing, they've been performing, and look at other options. So I think this won't be a done deal, it won't be, all right, put this to bed, we'll be looking at it on, at a minimum quarterly, biannual basis.
Any questions, Donna?
Uh, no questions, just a comment. Thank you for doing all this research and I think it sounds really good about PARS. I like hearing when a company is receptive and responsive.
Yeah, this was a little bit faster than I'd like to do, but I really want to make sure we stay ahead of the curve in this. The council was real progressive in, in, you know, setting up an actuarial to study and look at this. We're supposed to, by the Gatsby 45 recommendation, every two years have another actuarial valuation. So realistically, in about another year, we may need another valuation. I'm hoping by that time, the cost on those valuations will come down and, you know, it'll, we'll just get more information and be better equipped to make better decisions as we go along.
Which we appreciate very much. Rod, do you have any input?
Just to say that, that PARS is definitely not a fly-by-night agency. I think you're asking all the right questions, but just from having been in city management myself for about 20 years now, they've been around at least that long. They seem to be growing in terms of, because they're offering a lot of products aside from just this health benefits trust, they're offering different kinds of retirement enhancement programs. And a lot of cities are choosing for a variety of reasons to go with them rather than PERS for some of these extra products. Ken and I have been researching a cost savings, it's an alternative to social security for part-time employees that we're going to be bringing forward to you in the next couple of meetings that will save us, I guess I'll leave you in suspense, it's not a huge amount of money in the general fund, but it's savings across all of our funds for our part-time employees that actually works out being better for them than working for us a couple of years and just being in social security for those years. So, the point is that PARS has a whole range of financial products, they've got a good reputation, and I don't think there's any concern about selecting them.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ken. Is there any public comment on this issue? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I move that we adopt a tat, attached resolution, authorize city manager to implement the PARS, OPEB Post-Retirement Healthcare Plan and Trust for Creston City, and execute an administrative services agreement to administer the trust and authorize our city manager to make a transfer to the trust, a 4.1% of payroll less current pay-as-you-go payments for fiscal year 09-10.
I'll second that.
Do we have a resolution number, Karen?
07.
Yes, we do. 07.
Yes, 2010-07.
Thank you, Catherine. Uh, could you please pull the vote?
Certainly. Councilmember Westphal?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalom?
Thank you, yes. Okay, and then the plan and trust investment strategy, is that just PARS? Because I think Dennis just included that.
In, in the second part, under the recommendation, I made it into two different, A and a B, just to try and simplify it. And they have four different risk strategies, one being conservative, moderately conservative, moderate risk, and then a balanced moderately aggressive. And I think you can just really simplify it down to whether you, you know, we feel we've hit bottom in the economy and whether we're going up. That's my general impression, so I'm, I'm leaning more towards the moderately aggressive because I think now is the time to be buying equity stocks and things like that because the allocation for that is going to be higher for equities than say the conservative. And then the other is whether we go with high mark, which has a lesser investment cost, or the index fund, which tends to be a little safer because it's not targeted specifically towards one industry, it'll be target towards, or one company, it'll be target towards an industry with several companies, so it kind of diversifies the diversification. But this is the real confusing part, and I think we can really pick any one of those four investment risk strategies and be fine, and we can monitor them and, you know, see where they go.
So, hi, uh, the strategies are conservative, moderately conservative, moderate, and balanced moderately aggressive. And high mark or index funds, what does-
High mark is like Janus, it's a mutual fund company. We, in the past, had done some mutual fund investments with them because I still get a prospectus mailed to me, even though we don't currently have any of those investments now. But high mark is a mutual fund company, so they have a, a balance of, of these four types of risks, and then they'll pick the allocations of the company, they give you the disclosures of what that balance is, and give you monthly reporting on the investment performance. I think from all the details I could gather in there, the, the cost the investment advisor charges or basically takes from the earnings is going to be the lowest with high mark than with index funds. But index funds have a little bit lesser chance of decline than say high mark will because they're, they're picking a broader industry to pick from rather than just saying, oh, we're going to, you know, pick Microsoft and, you know, Adobe and something like that. They'll say, well, we're picking technology and it'll go across the board, so it kind of moderates out if one company drops down. So I think that the most conservative, safest investment would be probably strategy one, conservative and indexed, probably the most aggressive, the most, the highest risk and the highest chance of growth would be the, the number four, balanced moderately aggressive and the high mark.
But then you're, you're, it's a, you're gambling on the, on the system.
It is really, when, when you talk of risk, risk is always a gamble. I don't think it's, it's anything like the gambling I'm used to from Las Vegas where it's pretty much set that you're going to lose. But this one is just going to be in that. We can look at it from a monthly basis, and I asked him, you know, if we decide to change this, he says basically you could change this once a week. He says the only drawback is going to be the time it takes to give the order and for that order to be enacted. So it may, may take less than, you know, 24 hours or it may take 72 hours to get your, you know, change put in.
Who does the changes?
That would be the-
Financial advisor.
Investment advisor from Union Bank. I can't remember his name, but he is a, a CFA, which, it's a pretty extensive exam that I studied for, it didn't sit, but it's, it's, it's a lot more intense than a CPA or any other type of band.
So if we direct the city manager to direct you to say we want to, whatever, you know, a moderate with, with an index fund, then if we want to change that, we change it?
I think realistically, the city manager would have the authority, so I would be advising him. If, if something happened catastrophic out there, like the oil spill out there, and we thought, you know what, this is going to affect other companies, then we would, I would probably say, hey, let's make the, the switch and, and go to a more conservative approach. And that may even be a legitimate thing now because this, this spill is getting out of hand, it may have ramifications if, if fuel costs go up. So, you know, the conservative high mark might be the better one to take in that respect.
Have we, you're talking to the financial advisors for each one of these organizations and getting advice. Have we looked outside these two organizations to have somebody take a look at these two?
These are our only choices with PARS. Now, we can, they have a choice in there that was called directed or custom, meaning we dictate which stocks and which companies they invest in. I would never suggest that, even as much personal investing as I may do, it, it's not the direction we want to go.
I guess actually what I was meaning is maybe finding an, an outside, like a Merrill Lynch or an Edward Jones or another company to give us advice on these two to say, you know, they're steering us in the right direction.
Yeah, I think with these choices, that there'd be no reason why you couldn't go to, you know, just some financial advisors out there and, you know, they're going to give you their opinion on what those are. And I think with these four different risks and these two different types of investments, I think we can be fine with any one of those. But, you know, that, that's really where it comes in, where it, it's just almost a personal philosophy or opinion is where you want to go. When we start getting these monthly reports and these investments start coming in, we'll start seeing some of the performance and some of the costs. But until our balance gets up, I was trying to go on the aggressive side just so we can maybe get as much earnings as possible to build up that balance to defer some of the costs that we're going to pay the trust administrator and the investment advisor and whatnot.
You know, I, I read the objectives, you know, the investment objectives. So what is our objective with, with this? Is it, is it to grow this fund?
Yeah, capital appreciation and capital growth or, or investment growth.
Okay.
Because the way it's going to be, we're going to say, this, this 2010 year, we'll be depositing 120,000, 70,000 going out for the current payments, so we're only going to be having a, a real end product investment of say 50,000 plus. So it's not going to be very large. And these are set up to be, you know, a lot larger as these accumulate over time.
I think Dennis's point is the, the reason for growth, you know, because we're just trying to cover the costs. So if we're investing the cost, is the reason for growth just to cover any losses we may incur because of market strategy, you know, market-
Yeah.
-fluctuation?
How often are you going to look at this?
They send a monthly report, they sent me a sample and I don't know if I have it-
That's okay.
And if, and if it just keeps growing, what happens to that additional money?
That just keeps growing and accumulating in our, in our trust balance, so to speak. We're not going to be able to touch that money because that's set aside for paying the future benefits.
That we might be able to, to contribute less in future years as that value grows.
Because there's more, okay.
Yeah, like when we have a new valuation in a year, there, the, the lowest cost for us was the 4.1% of salary. If this performs well, they may come back and say, oh, you need 3.9% of salary, so we'd have that 2% savings. Whereas if it doesn't perform very well, then they may come back and say, oh, we need 4.3%. So it could go up a couple of points or down.
I think I'm more comfortable with moderate.
Well, the moderate-
Kind of in the middle.
The moderate provides current income and moderate capital appreciation, which it's not, I, I tend to be more conservative and, but that's just me, but I know that that's just me.
And I think you're not going to go wrong with any one of these because we're going to be looking at them. I'm going to be trying to see, they'll give us our investment choice, but I want to see what some of these others are and maybe after two or three months, I'll come back.
Do we need to make a choice on this to give you and then-
I think so because we should direct them.
And then if it changes, you have to come back to us?
I would think so. I, I, at, at least inform you of where we're going with it. So I mean, realistically, we probably could start with the most conservative, see if we can monitor how the others are going and then look at what our general impression with the economy is going and what the others would have done. We can maybe run some scenarios that, well, we made this much money in the conservative, if we would have been in this one, we would have made this much or lost this much.
Rod, how do other councils do this?
Couple of approaches you can take. You can have the decision-making at the council level. You could appoint the finance director to be the, you know, kind of in the treasurer role to make that decision. I think the way the resolution reads, the city manager is actually the plan administrator. So it could be a staff decision. Or you could go the, bring in Mike Sullivan, Brent Hoskinson, you know, outs, outside financial, people that are in the financial world and have them be a-
I, I hate giving control to one person. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that at all, not that I, I don't think you'd be a great-
And that's why I'm pitching it this way because I'm trying to keep my neck-
But I don't feel like I'm an investment expert either, so I think having the city manager, the city finance director, and maybe an outside expert to make those decisions would be best.
Yeah, anybody from the outside, I mean, they wouldn't be getting paid for it, so they would just be doing their community service basically because they don't have any involvement in these, in these investment tools. It, it can't hurt anything. So I mean, even if we want to put it off and, and, because we do have some financial advisors here in town and just pool them for it, I'm fine with that because I think, like I said, we can be-
Don't we need to put it somewhere now? Don't we need to make a decision now?
By June.
Well, well, what's, what's going to happen is we're going to get the resolution signed, sign all these agreements, send them off to them, and then I'm going to wait until they say, okay, now it's ready, send the check to this, this location here. You know, so there's still a lot of things to happen in the process, so I can't say with 100% certainty that we can give you this, or, you know, give them this information in a month and nothing will hold up. My guess is, is that we've done the first part and then now we have to wait till, till this part comes into play. And I don't know if that's going to be needed right away or we have to wait till all those paperwork goes through and the trust is created up.
And why, why do we have to do it? Why can't we do this locally? I just, that just came to my mind.
We would have to form our own trust.
I mean, no, why can't we, why couldn't we use a local investment firm?
Because it has to be in a trust.
And they don't do trusts?
Well, they don't, I'd be shocked if they do this kind of trust. This is a specialized-
Yeah, we're paying a trust advisor, I think, a minimum monthly fee of $400 a month. So-
Didn't we pass an ordinance that made you the finance director is also the treasurer of the city?
Yeah.
Okay. I would, you, you have a treasurer. Your treasurer is charged with the investment of city funds. I really, really counsel against bringing this up to the city council level. You do not want to sit here every month or every three months deciding, well, do we want to go conservative now because there's an oil spill in the Gulf? The economy seems to be low, but that means it should be coming back up. I mean, you do not want to do that. You want to delegate that to somebody and then that's part of their job description. If they screw it up, they're out.
And see, that's why I'm bringing it to you. I'm being much more conservative than we're talking about here by trying to share the burden of making this decision. And I have no problem standing that out.
You think the council should do it?
Or even help and guide until we get some feel for it. If you guys are fine with us, I, I would really, for my own- us, I, I would really, for my own interests and to, and to protect the city, I would be notifying the council in, you know, at least monthly reports that what we're doing and what it's performing. And I'm hoping that we can get some what-if scenarios. So that's why I said it can't go wrong if we take the most safe, conservative one.
Why don't we just go with the conservative, see how it goes and then have Ken report out to us-
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
At this time and then see, see what, see what we learn from it and then, then we can make a decision on how we wanna manage it in the future.
That's a motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Let's go with the conservative and-
I'm good with that, too.
Well, you're all conservative.
Pretty much.
I'm moderate.
Well, at this time.
I'm di- I'm down the middle of the road.
And I'm tired.
Declined state.
It's only 20 to 10.
We still have a couple items on the agenda.
You're just impatient. So you wanna go conservative.
No, I, I think that's the safest thing to do right at this point.
Since you can change it at any time.
Yeah, we can change it.
All right.
I would, I, I would recommend you start out just conservative.
Did I get a second?
Dennis.
Okay.
Second it.
Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westphal?
Yes.
Mayor Shlong?
I guess.
I guess.
Yes. I'm being cooperative.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ken. We appreciate your, your guidance there. Okay, discuss and give direction to staff regarding possible revision of our municipal code pertaining to mobile vending.
One second, are we gonna go back to the-
I'm sorry. We have number-
The fluoride is-
Fluoride. We have fluoride. Mr. Black?
Yes, Mayor. This is just a moment. So what you have here is a copy of the petition that was actually circulated. It's through the fortuity that Alisa Northrup is working tonight at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night that, and was listening to the council meeting over the speaker system. And she came forward and provided us with a copy of the petition that was actually circulated. We did delete the signatures since those are of limited, only, only supposed to be distributed for limited purposes. But I have asked, I put an asterisk next to the actual language of the ordinance that will be part of the ballot and will be voted on by the people. And as you can see, it has a number of whereas clauses and it gets down to the last two sentences, which read, "The public water supply shall not be used to deliver any product, substance, device, element, medicine, or preventative agent with the intent or for the purpose of affecting the physical or mental functions of the body of any person consuming such water. No fluoride or fluorine-containing substance may be added to the public water systems. All laws to the contrary are hereby repealed." That's, that is the ordinance that is now sought to be placed on the ballot. Tonight is your, tonight is functionally a deadline, although it is actually true that if you continued this to Monday, I think you would come within the, there's a, the meet, you're supposed to either adopt this ordinance or place it on the ballot at the meeting where the certification is presented or within 10 days thereafter.
That's unclear to me. Could you stay, say that again?
The certification is being presented to you tonight. And you are actually, one of the functions of an initiative is to force you to make a decision whether to adopt the ordinance that the signatures were gathered for. So you could pass this ordinance tonight.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Or within 10 days, or you can place it on the ballot to be voted on if you don't wish to adopt it.
Okay, so we have 10 days to adopt it, but we have until June 26th to, to declare it on the ballot?
No, I think from the, from the, the county clerk's point of view in terms of putting together her package for the November election, let's say there was legal action about this initiative, she needs to know the answer to the legal action by June 24th. And-
So I, it's at least my intent to have this put on the ballot in November.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the other council members wish to do. I don't necessarily wanna just adopt this ordinance.
Well, the, the elections code only gives you two choices.
Right. So I don't wish to adopt it.
Right. Therefore, you have to put it on the ballot.
Therefore, I would suggest that, and there's no public hearing on this, there could be public comment later. But I, I would want to certify this petition. And I guess my motion then is, is to certify the petition and have this placed on the November 2nd, 2010 ballot.
Yes, that would be a proper motion.
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, my only question, and I think it's follow-up to what Catherine was saying, is why is her, this two-page initiative not what was circulated to the voters?
It is. This, what you have-
Then why isn't that, why isn't this what was published?
Well, that I can't answer. That I don't have an answer to.
Is that required?
Uh, I don't have an answer to that either. I'd have to do some research.
So we may be certifying something to be put on the ballot that was not published correctly?
That's possible. But I would not recommend that you, I don't think the city council should sit in judgment of that.
I, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I'm not judging.
You could be certifying something that was not properly published. That does kind of appear to maybe be the case. But I would have to, I would have to spend time in the elections code to decide whether that is in fact the case. And I'm not sure that, you know, it may be subject to a lawsuit by a private party. Who knows what the actual consequence-
Or it could be that you can provide a summary for the intent?
Down the road.
He already did provide a summary for the intent.
No, 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 no. It could be that Catherine was allowed to provide a summary for her publish-
It's possible. I just don't have a copy of the elections-
I'm talking about Catherine Kelly.
Yeah, I know. I don't have a copy of the elections code to tell me whether or not she needed to publish the ordinance itself in the publication.
Okay. All right. I think we're clear now. I have a motion and a second. And yes, I'm gonna take public comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to this council. And could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Westphal?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yeah.
Councilmember Murray?
No.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shlong?
Yes, only because we have to. Okay, now we're moving on to number 17. Discuss and give direction to staff regarding possible revision of the municipal code pertaining to mobile vending. Our last meeting, Suzie Williamson came before us and felt that she, that her mobile business was being treated unfairly by our ordinance and claimed that one of our police officers had said he would write her a ticket for every popsicle that she sold. And so I've looked into that and found out the facts. And then also Donna has asked that we put this on the agenda tonight for review. And so, Mr. Butler, here we are.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. We do have Eric Taylor from our planning staff here tonight. He has a long history of the mobile vending ordinance and the particular vendor in question. His recommendation is that this really can be dealt with probably either just individually with staff or with a planning commission. But there was a request from the council and approval to go ahead and put it on the agenda. We're not sure it really needs to have a full revision of the mobile vending ordinance. I know, for example, that council member Murray was on the planning commission at the time when this was considered before. So you may wish to hear her comments this evening. You know, we don't really have any recommendation at this point other than for you to discuss the issue and direct staff as to whether you would like it handled at the planning commission level or whether you would like us to do a full review of the vending ordinance.
Great. Do you wanna add to that, Catherine?
Well, I would, I would like to just comment that when I was on the planning commission that we worked very hard to get Ms. Williamson the proper permits and worked on the ordinance so that she could get her silly Suzie's business launched. And I hope she remembers that so that, the city did work very hard so that you could get your business going. Yeah, so, so, and, so I think that perhaps if she abides by all the rules and complies with, I think that there was a problem with the school district. There was some, maybe some overstepping some boundaries with the school district that maybe you could get your business going again. And I think that this is a planning commission issue, not a city council issue at this time. So I think it can all be worked out if you just comply with the rules.
I, and, and just for the record, when I asked our chief of police what the deal was, 'cause I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't confident that one of our officers would threaten to write her a ticket that would be a misdemeanor for every single popsicle. And so what he said was that he followed up with the officer and he had spoken to Suzie several times and, but every time it was due to a complaint that he received. And so that's why he had to communicate with her. And so I think it's really maybe just a lack of communication. And maybe if everybody could sit down at the same table and be on the same page and understand what the rules and regulations and laws are. And I, and I understand that there are some issues with the school district and going on to their property during school time, which is not allowed. And so I think that if we had everybody could sit down and talk about the issue, that we may be able to make more progress.
And, and the chair of our planning commission, Richard Aneea, was not able to be here tonight. And I spoke with him on Saturday morning. He's in the Bay Area at a, at a gate training 'cause he's on, works for the police department as a reserve, I think. And he's not able to be here, but he, otherwise he would've been here. And I know that we had another planning commissioner here, but he just left not too long ago. He stayed probably as long as he could, Mr. Robert. So, so we're all interested in working with you, Suzie. So.
And if I may add something to this, because I think there's a lot of confusion that went on here. And the, the initial use permit was issued in 2006. And I believe about four months after that, you'd come to the planning commission and ask for revision to the municipal code, and it was revised. And it's a lot less stringent now. So the basic requirement is you just come back to the planning commission and ask for an amendment to your use permit. And they'll look at it again and they can make those changes. But the reason why a lot of these, the original use permit was never changed, so it still has a lot of the stipulations that were originally in here, like with the school district. Basically it says you can't be in R1 zone. The school district's in an R1 zone and that's why she was contacted at that time. But it can be changed. So it's just a matter, like you said, go into the planning commission and ask for revision. And I have a copy of the updated ordinance. If anybody would like to see this.
Are, are you saying, Eric, that she cannot be in an R1 zone?
According to her original use permit, now, the ordinance has been changed at her request. I mean, it's here in, in the actual staff report from 2007. So she, she could now as a, you know, conditions would be put as a conditional use permit. So whatever conditions are added to that or subtracted from that.
So your recommendation is she go before the planning commission, ask for permission to go up and down residential streets?
It's not only my recommendation, that's basically what the ordinance says. You need to do that. It's a procedure.
Okay.
So they're not draconian. It's just whatever the rules are when you first got your permit and then you need to work with the planning commission.
Well, we just wanna be sure that there's no unfair competition because we see Schwann's trucks.
No, like I said, the, the original ordinance was pretty draconian. It was very stringent.
Tell me, yeah, tell me the difference between what she's allowed to do and what Schwann's is allowed to do. Is it because of the noise?
I'm not sure what Schwann, I know, I wouldn't hear privy to the original conversation here. So what are we talking about with Schwann? Are they, they're like a delivery? Don't they deliver to like grocery stores and things or they?
No, they're- Neighborhoods.
Private, private. They're, they deliver orders, you know, like you say you, you want some, they're frozen food and you, you, you have an order slip and you say, I wanna have whatever it is that they-
They, they deliver to private homes.
So they're like a delivery company, not like a-
Or ice cream.
So, and mobile vending is a little different because you're just driving down the street and having people come out into the street and buy off the truck. Whereas you're talking about somebody doing deliveries.
You can do the same thing with Schwann. So I don't see any-
I mean, I'll, I'll go back and look and see what their use permit says. But I mean, it's no different. Just come back and ask for a change. I, we are just bound by what's in this conditional use permit. That's what we have to go by. So unless you come and ask us to change this use permit, there's not a lot we can do.
So, okay, so Schwann, every, well, hopefully, every vending business has a use permit through the state.
They're mobile vendors, yes.
Okay. And some ha- may have different conditions than others.
Correct.
Okay. So you're, I think what he's saying is your use permit may be different than what Schwann's use permit says. And so if you want yours to be different, you just have to go back through the process and ask to have it amended.
That's why they're called conditional use permits.
But it has it right here now in the code. It's there. You can sell food items and you have to have an enclosed structure which has been issued a certificate of occupancy, blah, 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 blah. And if all those are met, then that permit is issued with whatever conditions are on there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You'll be allowed to speak during public comment as soon as the staff and council is, has gotten through this.
Well, I think something needs to be brought up.
You, during public comment. Any questions from the rest of the council for Eric?
I just wanna make sure this gets put on the planning commission that Suzie had in common.
Sure. Come on down and we'll get you on the next meeting.
Might even be a good idea to go talk to him before the next planning commission to see what's required to look at, to-
But it is in the next one.
The next one's in, in May, but we, we're already full for that agenda. So it'll be the next one after that.
What?
She cannot be put on that agenda for May?
I'll look at it. See, I already have six other items I'm trying, that I already have. And we have a certain time period which you have to apply to get onto the agenda.
I know, but we've been in and in and in and out.
Well, I'm not sure because when I spoke to her in the past, that, that's exactly what I told her she needed to do.
Let me just clarify. You've been in and talked with Mr. Taylor?
Negative.
Not been in personally.
So you haven't been in and in and in and in?
Yeah.
Huh?
Talking, yes, to other cities.
Who have you spoke to?
Yeah. The lady, the lady I talked to, she was the city manager. I'm not doing that.
This is our city manager.
Yeah. She told me I would have to come into the office and get a letter or send me a letter and write in a country city council meeting to ask for this change. And she tried to send it to me, but I'm not very good with this here. So that's my answer to see if I can turn it over.
Sure. And you did. We're addressing it with our staff. And he will see, there are time limitations on the planning commission when you can actually, it, it's a process, you know, and there's, you have to post everything and you have to make copies and you have to get it to people within so much time. And so what he's saying is he doesn't know if he can do that for May, but he'll definitely, if not May, it'll definitely be on for June.
Is it a possibility to put it in as an emergency item?
Yeah, I'll see what I do. Just come down, do you have time to come down tomorrow and talk to me? I'll be there all day. Correct. My name's Eric Taylor.
And his name is Eric Taylor. Yeah. Thanks, Eric. Okay, I'm gonna take public comment now. Sir?
Henry Cole, I live in the county. The one thing that I think that is important, is you have a widow. Her husband died, he worked at her Pelican Bay. And she had to sell her house, she'd take care of a grandson that's a special needs kid. And she's just trying to make a living. You know? This thing about the schools, she's on private property, it's not in the city, it's in the county. You know? She donates a significant portion of her monies to Delnor Music. She donates to soccer things, she does, there's been a bunch of kids that have, she's helped on these trips that the school's taking, you know, and stuff like that. So I think that, you know, let's look at this as a small business, you know. I have property in this county, a couple counties down south, some Kansas and some Nevada. You know, this is the only county I know of, city, that there's a big problem about running ice cream trucks. I mean, I go down to Clovis, they have ice cream trucks. You go down to Fresno, they got ice cream trucks. Go down to LA, they got ice cream trucks. They're running around with noisemakers and all this stuff, and she doesn't, she's got a noisemaker, you know, the little ding ding ding, you know, type thing, but she doesn't wa, usually use it because everybody knows she's there. She runs a good, clean truck. She has turned in a couple drug dealers that she's seen, stuff like that. She makes it, you know, tries to be a good citizen. I would suggest that you put this down as an emergency thing, so that she can get her business legal. Thank you.
Thanks.
As far as the school district, I have talked to the school district, and Suzie saves lots of money for the custodians, because she picks up all the trash as long as her helpers, and she is on private property. And she has worked with Jeff Napier, she's worked with Tony Fabricus, she's worked with Colleen Parker, Jan Morehouse. And she has done what they requested. As far as soccer, she has donated, she ran her snack bar last year. And when we had a party in City Limits, she couldn't come, even though we called and asked for her because of the ordinance. Now, I did not come to your last meeting because I happened to have been sick. This has been going on for a while. I know for myself, and no offense to the city, but when I have gone in for soccer questions, I get directed to, I've talked to Eric once. I, I've never talked to your new city manager. I've talked to Linda, I've talked to Jim, but everybody, I always get somebody different, whoever's available. And so, you know, she's trying to get a solution, and no offense, because, trust me, I'm on meetings, I know how hard they are, but she's been going at this for a long time. So if you could get her on May's, that would be great. And if we can come down and talk to you tomorrow, I will be happy to make the time to come with her, just to get this straightened out. And she makes a lot of kids happy. You call her, and she'll come to your house for one child, and my red light's up, so. Just consider that. And all the kids that were here had left, they were also here for Suzie.
First of all, my name is Susan Williamson, I live in the county, and I would really like to thank this panel of people for taking the time to listen to me today, because it's been a very long evening. And I'm amazed at how hard you work on behalf of our city. I'm so very proud to be a citizen of this community and to serve in any way that I can. I am parked out at the high school, but I'm on county property, and I was invited there by staff, because the kids were leaving in droves to go to the markets that were up on North Crest. I give this school a pledge of $5 a day, which will be about $800 this year from the truck. And it goes to the music department to help the kids, because the teacher there said he needed new instruments. And I thought, maybe this is a way I could help. I do pick up the trash in the parking and public areas on Small El Dorado, and all over the front of the school, and I do it just because I want to. And it, the thought occurred to me that if I do this, it will save the custodians who are paid 14-plus dollars an hour to do more important jobs. Because I'm just one person, 20 minutes a day, how hard can it be? And I thought if I set the example, maybe other seniors would see that they could make a difference if they tried. It, it's up to 46 hours just this school year that I've been out there doing that. We pick up the recyclable containers that are out there, and we, we collect those. And the first two years, they went to the Lighthouse Quilters Guild, because they needed money to pay their taxes. This last year, they all went to a single student who was on the performance choir, who could not afford to go on the trip to Hawaii. Some of the money from the truck goes to feed the children, it's up to over $400 this year. The truck has also provided me an opportunity to sponsor our kids when they're doing events, such as Bob Saylor's daughter, when she went to the Sharpshooter Championships for the State of California, and at Crescent Elk to sponsor a basketball team. And I would be pleased if I could be a volunteer to help you with the kids of Delnart First Five. I don't remember your name, but I was so impressed by the things you said. I would just really like to do anything to help those hungry kids here in our town. And I thank you for your consideration and your help tonight.
Thanks, Suzie. I think what we have seen here is just communication, and, you know, oftentimes, we have a very small staff. So when you go in, you may get a different person downstairs, because a lot of them are out working, doing the road projects, and coming back, going back and forth. And Rod is upstairs administering, and so he's not downstairs. And so it's just, you know, being on the same page. So, communicate, go see Eric tomorrow, and get through the process. Unfortunately, in business and government, everything's a process, and sometimes it goes slower than we like. So, thanks for being here tonight, and we'll see, we'll see what we can do for you.
And I think the City Council in particular wants to be business friendly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think anybody here is trying to deny your service, or even deny your giving nature. So, you know, Eric will do all that he can to put you on the next agenda. If Jackie goes with you, maybe two people listening can, can help. And I think it's in the provision already. I think the use permit just has to be adjusted via the Planning Commission, and I think it'll be all good to go.
Oh, good luck. Okay.
Thank you.
Come back anytime.
Okay, select a date and time for City Council workshop regarding changes to the general plan and urban growth boundary.
Mr. Butler?
Mayor moves to the council, council members Murray and Slert will be familiar with this. At the last LAFCO meeting, which was a week ago tonight, early, yeah, a week ago, last Monday afternoon, there was some discussion about the city's municipal service review. And part of that was a discussion of our urban growth boundary and our sphere of influence, and some of the terms that came up at the recent annexation workshop. During that discussion, it became clear that we may want to look at making some changes to our urban growth boundary before the municipal services review is approved in its final form. And George Williamson from LAFCO would like to actually have a workshop with you to discuss those, those issues and present those ideas, and see if the council is comfortable with making those changes. I don't think they're really major, but they're significant enough that he wanted to present them to you in a workshop form. So I was looking at.
Can you tell me, Rod, real quickly, what the benefit is of changing the urban growth boundary?
I think it has to do with making the urban growth boundary consistent with the sphere of influence. And those are the.
Can you give me an example? Just, I'm tired.
Yeah, there's an area, for example, down on South 101 that is kind of adjacent to Martin Ranch, but not the Martin Ranch property itself. Right now, in our general plan, it's given some designation like County Resources, but it's not in, if I remember this correctly, it's not in our urban growth boundary currently. And it probably is not an area that would be developed, but we might want to have that area in our urban growth boundary to be consistent with both the sphere of influence and the general plan, and the urban growth boundary. And there are two or three different areas of the city where this applies, where this kind of a thing applies.
It's potential growth area.
Yeah, it could be.
Development area.
So it's zoned, it's zoned properly for an area of growth?
It's got kind of a weird zoning designation, like County Resources.
George said he'd provide us with the zoning at our next LAFCO meeting.
So is this going to be done in-house through LAFCO, through?
It would be done through LAFCO.
Right. But there would have to be, but the council would have to adopt changes to our general plan as part of this process. And that's why, that's why George wants the full council involved.
To consider them.
Right.
Yeah, you have to consider and decide if you want to.
And do we pay this person to come to this?
Actually, George would do it himself, and he would do it with his LAFCO, wearing his LAFCO hat.
Okay.
So would LAFCO pay him?
Yeah, yeah, part of his, you know, of course, we all, the city and the county contribute to LAFCO's budget, but he would do it under the umbrella of his LAFCO time.
Okay. What are we, what are we looking at?
So I was looking at either, one of the off Mondays in June, either the 14th or the 28th. I wasn't sure if, if Mr. Burns was going to do his, his normal second half of June trip, so he may be out of the picture.
14th is fine, 28th is iffy.
And then the other thing we could do, because I don't think it's going to be a real lengthy meeting, if you wanted to tack it on, do an early workshop the night of your regular Monday, June 21st meeting.
Can I interrupt for a second? The 28th is a LAFCO meeting at 4:00 PM here in the board chambers. Was that going to be part of that? Was that an anticipated date, or was he planning?
True, we could do it, he's, and he'll be up here anyway for that meeting. We could do it after, immediately following the LAFCO meeting.
LAFCO usually only lasts about maybe half an hour, 45 minutes.
So the 28th, at like 5?
Yeah.
What time does LAFCO start?
Four.
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 And it's here, so you could just come in when you're, I believe. I don't know if there's anything else, these are old calendars here. We have our closed session at 5.
It's not a regular meeting.
It's not a regular meeting.
Yeah, it's the 28th.
Why don't we tentatively shoot for the June 28th? Is that good for you?
I think I can.
Yes.
5 o'clock?
Yeah.
Go 5 o'clock and see if we can use the conference room. Okay.
Back to you. Confirm that if George is okay, and I don't know why he would not be.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you want to do it here or in your conference room at the?
No, here. We'll just do it here after their LAFCO meeting. Just ask Rodl, pardon me?
Is it, it's not going to be a closed session, right? It's a workshop?
Workshop, yeah.
So you want to do it in the conference room back there?
No, I don't think so. It has to be open to the public.
Yeah, what I'm asking is why not do it out here?
Wherever, I don't care.
I just heard the word.
Here in this building.
So I want to clarify.
Just, when you're looking at maps and stuff, it's not very easy to do that here as a group. So I thought a conference room in the building, there's a big table, might be more.
He actually made a very good PowerPoint presentation that was in color and very clear.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever works, I don't care.
Have your screens there.
Okay. Legislative items?
Nothing this evening.
Um, I saw, um, in the City Weekly Newsletter, um, not Crescent City, but League of Cities, they reported that they received over a million signatures to.
Yeah, they rolled out their, uh, their press conferences on the League of Cities Local Revenue Protection Measure. Yeah, they were shooting for 1.1 million, so that they have enough to account for some getting knocked out. And they achieved that, so. So, probably will be on the ballot November of this year. That's something that we definitely want to get behind.
Yeah, that newsletter that Laura sends all of us is very, very educational. Okay, reports, concerns, referrals, Mr. Burns?
I gave everyone an invitation through the, via the Redwoods Mural Society for a May 13th dedication for the mural on the 9th Street, right behind the, that little coin shop and the liquor store. Also, you have a, it's an invitation, and it's also in the newsletter that you have. And that's also a nice red mural map in your envelope, too, that shows all the maps going on. There's also a book that's been published by Kevin Bruce. It's a, and Delnart County is the first, six pages, it's called Large Art, Small Places. And it has Delnart County, Crescent City right in here. The first few pages deal with Northern Coast mural route, and it takes into account like six, like 12 murals. And, and it's a nice book, and people use it all up and down the state of California. And it ends way down south in, near LA. There goes to Indio. So it's a, it's a nice little book. These are for sale if you want to buy one. Seriously, and it's a nice, if you're into murals, it takes you through California, look at the murals.
Can you buy them here locally?
Yep, and we're the first, we're the first place in the, in the state.
And where are they being sold, Dennis?
I think my wife has a bunch, so contact her.
Dennis gets half the profit.
No, I don't get anything from this, the Mural Society does.
I'm kidding. I'm sure, like, maybe Debbie at Delnart office will start carrying them or something.
She may, she may have them. But if you want to look at it, it's right here.
Great. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Donna?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Slert?
You mentioned Mayor earlier about Buck Pierce being here this past week with interviews with the Toronto Sports Network, which is the equivalent of ESPN in Canada. And the mayor and other civic people were involved in seeing him around with the crews. And the exposure, I think, is going to be monumental to this community, showing the redwoods, the rivers, the ocean, sea stacks and so forth. So that's something that was special and we probably couldn't afford to buy. But, but in addition to that, Buck Pierce has been an exceptional citizen and, and has had major accomplishments now. And I, I would think that perhaps in the near future, it'd be appropriate to have a Buck Pierce Day, Appreciation Day, for his accomplishments in, in our city. And then I joined the airport JPA signing ceremony on Saturday, Kirk County and Delnart. And I think that was monumental, slow coming, but successful. Tenetry Commission last week. And I'm sad to report that the city has been had by the state courts regarding the replacement trees of the heritage trees. If you haven't been by there and seen, they have been replaced. I think it's sad and pathetic, but it's real, that's what happened.
So you're not serving on any more tree ad hoc committees, Mr. Slert? Who can blame him?
They're hardly heritage trees.
He's now the complaint department.
Yeah.
We can do the Buck Pearson, since he's a quarterback, we can call it Pass the Buck Pierce Day.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right, Catherine?
Well, I'm on the Chamber of Commerce Board as our representative.
Well, I'm on the Chamber of Commerce Board as our representative. And I've attended the Fourth of July planning. And the Youngs are the owners, former, well, the owners of Glenn's Bakery are the grand marshals for the Fourth of July parade. So that's very fitting. And I just thought that'd be nice to announce. And I went to the last community concert for the season on last Thursday night. And this family, the Hunt family from Virginia, they play a lot of Celtic music, but they were totally amazing. The youngest one is twelve years old, but they, all of them played fiddle and all that. But they just loved the redwoods and the ocean. So I was very proud of our beautiful, our natural beauty around here. And it was a really great concert to attend. And then I attended some of the things that Mike Thompson had here while he was here. It was nice to have our representative visit our community once again. So, and it was very well-attended, the pasta dinner. So those are my report outs.
I believe our theme for the Fourth of July is Pride by Our City by the Sea?
Pride in Our City by the Sea.
Yes. That's great. Oh, gosh, what have I been doing? We are actually going to be, I'll give you an airport update. We're actually going to be on the Coastal Commission agenda in May for an airport that we don't want. No, just kidding.
He's tired.
No, it was just not exactly what we envisioned. And it's, but it's, it's an airport terminal. It's just not gonna be as user-friendly to the consumer as our local authority would like. But due to the, not appeal, appeal, from the Friends of Delnart and the Coastal Commission itself, and saying that we're going to affect the trees, we had to redesign a lot of it. Cost us a lot more money. And we're going now to commission to get approval on about proposal number ten. So we'll see what, what happens there. Let's see. Mr. Slert and I attended, not too long ago, an ad hoc committee with Elk Valley Rancheria to discuss utilities. It's a rather short meeting this time. And they're just really, it was just kind of an update on their financing and what their strategies are moving forward. And let's see. Spending a couple days with Buck Pierce was, I mean, I didn't spend the whole day with him, but for several hours each day was pretty amazing experience. And I got to go up to Endured Speech Lookout, you know, some of those things we don't do every day because we live here. And just, it was, it was one of those picture-perfect days. And it was, it was amazing. And they, they fell in love with our area. And all I could think about when I was interacting with him is that I hope my son turns out to be just like him. He was so polite and so respectful and so genuine. And I just really, really admire him and his family. And so that was a real treat for me. Mike Thompson was here, got to meet with him here in a public forum. I think I was the only one that attended that from the city. But then we moved on to the airport, where we had a joint signing with the newest member of the airport authority, which is Currie County. And so not only was Congressman Thompson there, but also Assemblyman Chesbrough. And we talked about, you know, not having borders, but instead being neighbors and, you know, all part of the same region. And so it's, I think, still one of, what is considered one of the only JPAs in the nation that has two cities, a city in each county, I'm sorry, a city in each state, a county in each state, and also a sovereign nation. And legislation is moving forward to also include Smith River Rancheria. And so we're all working together to try to move our airport terminal forward and, you know, eventually the future of the airport itself, which is so important to economic development here. And let's see. I won't talk about the 175 enchilada panels that we made. But instead, I wanted to, to mention that today and tomorrow, there are MLPA meetings happening out at Elk Valley Rancheria. And there is opportunity for public input. And so if you're interested in that, I would encourage you to attend. I'm also sitting on the ad hoc committee for the Delnart Solid Waste Management Authority franchise agreement review. So I reviewed previously the previous franchise, and then the new agreement that we were gonna send out. And now I'm part of the process of actually reviewing all three bids that were submitted. But then, you know, eventually it'll be the entire board that will make that decision. But I've, I've actually learned a lot and appreciated the process. And for those of you that are still interested in cultural center fees, Mr. Slert and I will be meeting with staff hopefully later this week. We're trying to coordinate schedules. And hopefully come back to this council with some things in writing at our next meeting. And I wanted to ask Mr. Butler if he would do a wrap-up on our town hall meeting and our next city council meeting. Kind of, I'd like to see kind of a summary of the surveys that we received in each roundtable discussion. I know that each member filled out a survey, so I'd kind of like to see what, what those said. And I know that this weekend, we have the Nature and Bird Festival. And so there will be festivities at the cultural center on Friday night, and then a regional dinner on Saturday, the eighth, out at the South River How and Quit Hall. But all week long, I think, there's fun stuff happening to celebrate our nature and heritage, and lots of tourists in town. So when you see one, tell them thank you for spending their money. And next Monday, we will have a budget meeting at the Fire Hall on Ice Street at five o'clock, if you're interested in that. And other than that, I haven't been busy at all. Anything else, council? Okay. Adjourned this meeting. It's one of the latest we've had in a long time. Thank you.